And with that, will you please rise for the presentation of colors from North Henderson High School.
Forward, march. Forward, march. Forward, march. Ready, march. Ready, eggs. Freezing, march.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward, march. Ready, eggs. Forward, march. 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 Forward, march.
I want to say a special thank you to the North Henderson High School Junior ROTC Cadets for being here today to present our colors on a non-student day. And now with that, we'd ask for you to please observe a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Board members, you have the agenda before you. I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. That's a minute.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion, carry. And first on the agenda is time for our student and staff. I think we're just going to do staff today, correct?
Staff today, yes ma'am.
So, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is our of the year celebration that we do each October where we get to honor multiple teachers and professionals, or educational professionals across the district for earning district accomplishments and even beyond. So, we'll start out with our HCPS Beginning Teacher of the Year. We'd like to ask Mr. Alton to come up and present.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett, and members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Sarah Schwartz, Henderson County's Public Schools Beginning Teacher of the Year. Sarah, we were fortunate enough to have Sarah do her student teaching with us as well, and it was just very clear when Sarah did her student teaching with us that this was someone we needed to be able to hold on to. And fortunately, we were able to do so, and she proved us right and did a phenomenal job in the classroom. And I'll just say, if like she's the example of the future of education in Henderson County Public Schools, we are going to be in very good hands. So, congratulations, Ms. Sarah Schwartz.
And to all of our honorees, if you'll hang around till the end, we'd like to do one large picture of all of our of the years. Next, we'll move to Dr. Childers because the next two come from Etowah Elementary.
Good afternoon. I'm excited to recognize the Henderson County Public Schools Exceptional Children's Educator of Excellence, Ms. Erin Sealy. She is an occupational therapist at many of our schools, Etowah, Fletcher, Apple Valley, and North Henderson High School. And she was selected from all of the special education staff that are available and who were nominated. She is a gift to our school system. She represents the related service providers and is the first, I believe, related service provider to be recognized for Henderson County. So, this is Ms. Erin Sealy. And next, I would like to recognize Lieutenant Tom Ammons, who is the Henderson County Public Schools School Resource Officer of the Year. And sadly, he is no longer just Etowah's Resource Officer. He has been promoted to oversee all of our school resource officers in his new role. He is an absolute joy to work with. He's a phenomenal leader. He went above and beyond at our school at Etowah. He knows all of our students, all of our families, and he especially saved our library and other places during Pralene because we were experiencing some flooding, and he stayed at school navigating all of the challenges that came during that time. So, come on down, Officer Ammons.
Next, I'm going to call up Ms. Amy Cleveland to share about Dana.
So, I'm here to recognize Deborah Ramsey, the HCPS Media Coordinator of the Year. Ms. Ramsey is more than just a librarian at Dana. She leads the Dana Research Center and provides a space where all of our students acquire a love for reading, explore topics, learn to investigate, research, and cite information, and learn how to be digitally responsible through classroom lessons every day. Ms. Ramsey is in charge of all the technology at Dana. She troubleshoots, repairs, replaces, and records devices, and she keeps everyone connected and functioning so productivity and learning can continue to take place. She also helps to manage our social media pages. She does the job of three and maybe more full-time employees. Mrs. Ramsey has been at Dana for 27 years. She helps to propel our school towards success and supports the growth of our students. She helps to lead our student lighthouse team, manages our student leadership roles, and is our Battle of the Books coach. She was also instrumental in getting a someone we needed to be able to hold on to. And fortunately, we were able to do so, and she proved us right and did a phenomenal job in the classroom. And I'll just say, if like she's the example of the future of education in Henderson County Public Schools, we are going to be in very good hands. So, congratulations, Ms. Sarah Schwartz.
And to all of our honorees, if you'll hang around till the end, we'd like to do one large picture of all of our of the years. Next, we'll move to Dr. Childers because the next two come from Etowah Elementary.
I'm excited to recognize the Henderson County Public Schools Exceptional Children's Educator of Excellence, Ms. Erin Sealy. She is an occupational therapist at many of our schools, Etowah, Fletcher, Apple Valley, and North Henderson High School. And she was selected from all of the special education staff that are available and who were nominated. She is a gift to our school system. She represents the related service providers and is the first, I believe, related service provider to be recognized for Henderson County. So, this is Ms. Erin Sealy. Schools School Resource Officer of the Year. And sadly, he is no longer just Etowah's resource officer. He has been promoted to oversee all of our school resource officers in his new role. He is an absolute joy to work with. He's a phenomenal leader. He went above and beyond at our school at Etowah. He knows all of our students, all of our families, and he especially saved our library and other places during Pralene because we were experiencing some flooding, and he stayed at school navigating all of the challenges that came during that time. So, come on down, Officer Ammons.
Next, I'm going to call up Ms. Amy Cleveland to share about Dana.
So, I'm here to recognize Deborah Ramsey, the HCPS Media Coordinator of the Year. Ms. Ramsey is more than just a librarian at Dana. She leads the Dana Research Center and provides a space where all of our students acquire a love for reading, explore topics, learn to investigate, research and cite information, and learn how to be digitally responsible through classroom lessons every day. Ms. Ramsey is in charge of all the technology at Dana. She troubleshoots, repairs, replaces, and records devices, and she keeps everyone connected and functioning so productivity and learning can continue to take place. She also helps to manage our social media pages. She does the job of three and maybe more full-time employees. Mrs. Ramsey has been at Dana for 27 years. She helps to propel our school towards success and supports the growth of our students. She helps to lead our Student Lighthouse Team, manages our student leadership roles, and is our Battle of the Books coach. She was also instrumental in getting a robotics club started at Dana. Go Dana Bots! Wherever you look in our school, you will see the influence, investment, and care of Mrs. Ramsey. I can say this from me, from all of your Dana family, and from HCPS, that we are very proud of you, Mrs. Ramsey. Thank you for your dedication to our Wildcats. Mrs. Ramsey.
To present the School Nurse of the Year, I'm going to call on everybody's favorite Alton, Shannon Alton.
Probably one of the kids, actually.
Yeah, probably. But in this room, I can take the favorite. So, I am very excited to present Kim Ball, our School Nurse of the Year. We are so fortunate to have a school nurse in all of our buildings, and not many school systems have that, so we love that. But Ms. Ball is definitely a part of the Fletcher family. When you go over there, you can see she's involved in about everything that goes on over there. The kids love her, the staff loves her, and we are so excited to present Ms. Kim Ball with the School Nurse of the Year.
Now, I'll call on Mr. Luke Manuel to represent and recognize our HCPS CTE Teacher of the Year.
First, thank you to our school board and leadership team for having us here today. I'm here to help honor Mr. Jason Livingston for his outstanding work in being recognized as the District's NCAT and CTE Teacher of the Year. Mr. Livingston has and does an outstanding job and runs a thriving agricultural and FFA program at West Henderson. He has fostered a dynamic learning environment for his students, whether it be in agri-science, horticulture, animal science, local, regional, state, and now national competitions, which they're about to go to here shortly. He does an exceptional job representing and teaching for our school district.
Now, I'd like to call up Dr. John Maderas to share about the HCPS Outstanding Math Teacher of the Year.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is my honor to present to you our HCPS Outstanding Math Teacher of the Year. And I want to talk about Ms. Wright for just a moment. I have had the privilege of working with Ms. Wright at two schools in our district, and in that time, I have been a firsthand observer to how she serves her students. She prioritizes exceptional relationships, and every single one of her students finds a way to do harder things than they thought that they could do because of the way that she works with them, inspires them, and drives them forward. Not only does Ms. Wright do that with her students, but at rugby, as our AIG math specialist, she has had a tremendous impact on the math outcomes at Rugby Middle School. If you look at our outcomes, as I'm sure you all have, you see some really great things happening in math at rugby, and Ms. Wright is a major catalyst for that. So, without further ado, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Molly Wright.
So, the Teacher of the Year is always interesting because we have named the Teacher of the Year, and we've had other celebrations for the Teacher of the Year, but we also want to make sure that that Teacher of the Year gets recognized at a board meeting with all of the peers across the district. So, at this time, I'll call up Mr. Brandon Ball to share about the HCPS Teacher of the Year.
All right. First, I'd like to thank the board and Mr. Garrett for just creating this time and space to recognize all these amazing accomplishments today. It is with great pride that I recognize Marley Moreno-Holyfield, our incredibly talented art teacher, as the Henderson County Teacher of the Year. Ms. Moreno-Holyfield is more than just an educator. She is a visionary who brings creativity, compassion, and connection into every lesson she teaches. Her classroom is a space where students feel seen, inspired, and empowered to express themselves through art. Marley's ability to nurture talent while building confidence and community has made a lasting impact on our schools. Her recognition as County Teacher of the Year is not only well-deserved, but a reflection of the dedication, innovation, and heart she brings to her students and staff every single day. We are so fortunate to have Ms. Moreno-Holyfield as part of our IHS team and also represent Henderson County Public Schools as the Teacher of the Year. Ms. Marley. Moreno-Holyfield.
Through her portfolio process, she has been selected for the interview process for the Regional Teacher of the Year, too. So, she has made it to that next step, so congratulations. And we know she'll represent us in an outstanding manner. So, the Principal of the Year always draws the short straw because I present the Principal of the Year award. And this year, we are proud to honor Dr. Kaitlyn Davis. Come on up, Dr. Davis. Now, Dr. Davis loves to be celebrated publicly. No, we're certainly excited to honor Dr. Davis. As a reminder, this is a selection by the principal's peers, so the Fellow Principal Selectus Award, and this year was a slam dunk winner when we went through the voting process. Under Dr. Davis's leadership, Apple Valley Middle has continued to excel academically and has had solid and sustainable growth, which is what we love to see. They have earned their Lighthouse, Leader in Me Lighthouse designation, as among an elite cohort of lighthouse schools in the state, nation, and even worldwide. Apple Valley is one of the eight middle schools in the state with this designation. Now, Dr. Davis's energetic and positive approach, genuine care for staff, willingness to challenge herself and others have shaped a culture, belonging, and achievement at Apple Valley. So, what I really appreciate about Dr. Davis is her dogged determination to make Apple Valley the very best place it can be academically, athletically, culturally, and all the way around. She makes it a place where kids want to run into the building, not run away from. So, join me in congratulating, and that's saying something for middle schoolers, by the way. So, join me in congratulating our 2026 Principal of the Year, Dr. Kaitlyn Davis. Now, we give you the obligatory... So, for those of you who love the spotlight, come on back up because we're going to put you on the stage, and we're going to take a picture of all of our of the years. So, if you'll join your honorees and fellow honorees onstage, please. And family, this is a great time to walk up, get whatever pictures you want.
Is everyone ready? Look here. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. Y'all look perfect.
Thank you, teachers and staff, for coming out this afternoon, and thank you for all the work you do, the tireless hours you put in. Thank you. And now, we're ready for our program highlight. Mrs. Alton.
Hello again. So, today, I have Lee Putnam with me. Lee, like, was not able to make it because she had to attend to something at her school. So, she gave me a list of notes that I'll read to you. So, we're going to talk a little bit about something that's been around for a while, but CFNC's Countdown to College Week. So, they've changed and evolved a lot since it started in, I think, 2007, but it's what they're making happen now is with their College Connect and everything else they have, they're making college possible for everyone. So, College Application Week this year is October 20th through the 26th. Do I have the little clicker? Oh, wait. Do you see it? Oh, I think it's in there. Sorry. Okay. Got it. Yep, there it is. So, what is CFNC? So, college for North Carolina is CFNC. It's a free service that the state of North Carolina helps students plan, apply, and pay for college. The North Carolina State Education Assistance Authority is the primary sponsor for the partnership with DPI and the North Carolina Community Colleges, UNC System, and all of the independent colleges and universities. So, what are our schools doing to support, help support our students and parents? So, there we have several financial aid nights at each of our schools, which help the parents because the financial aid process, even I get nervous knowing that pretty soon I'm going to have to go through the financial aid process with my kids. It's not an easy thing, but they're making it easier, and all of our counselors make it very easy by having these financial aid nights where the experts come in from usually Blue Ridge Community College and some of our other schools as well, and help parents go through. It can be intimidating, it can be a lot, but they can sit down and work through it right there. Residency, I'm going to let Ms. Putnam kind of talk a little bit about that, and transcript readiness, that's another thing that our counselors are doing. And then, NC College Connect is a new program where they are making it even easier for our students. So, they will get, any student that has a 2.8 or higher will get a letter in the mail with all participating colleges, and it will say, "You've been looked at by all of these schools," and you can go ahead and apply to all these schools. So, it makes it a whole lot easier, and Ms. Putnam can talk to you a little bit about that one as well. So, North Henderson, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what they're doing here. And somewhere I put her notes in here. So, they go into all the senior English classes, and they talk to them about the college education process, including the RDS, the college application, financial aid, and their goal is to have all the students, all the seniors, apply to at least one college during College Application Week. So, I'm going to read a little bit about what Ms. Like prepared for us. So, she said, "North Henderson was a part of the original College Application Week pilot back in 2007, and we've seen it grow from one day to a full week, and now it's really a year-long initiative. What started as just college applications has evolved into something much more inclusive and meaningful for all of our students. We now have what we call the 3E approach, enrollment, enlistment, and employment, to make sure that every senior can explore a path that fits their goals, whether that's college, the military, or entering the workforce. At North Henderson, roughly 30 to 35% of our seniors are the first in their families to earn a high school diploma. That's why we focus on providing tangible events and guidance, helping students take meaningful steps toward life and after high school. We encourage exploration and support each student in identifying the path that best fits their goals. On College Application Day, every senior spends a dedicated time in the Media Center, working directly with the counselors, college reps, military recruiters, apprenticeship coordinators, and community partners. The Media Center is divided into three Es, so students can go where they feel like they belong and get the support that they need. It's organized, hands-on, and really feels like a celebration of their next steps, complete with games, prizes, and of course, donuts. What makes us most proud is how collaborative this is. Teachers, administrators, and community partners come together so that every student leaves feeling supported and confident." So, that is what's going on at North Henderson. And before I turn it over to Ms. Putnam, I am going to say that we have parents that really get excited about this, and it's very helpful to them. And I had a parent, Ms. Putnam had a parent come to her last year and said, "You know, if you want me to share with other parents how helpful this was for me, I'd be happy to." So, we have her right here. This is Jennifer Fur.
Hi. My name is Jennifer, and my son Elijah Fur graduated with a class of 2025 from West last spring. I attended the financial aid meeting last fall with him to learn about the basics of FAFSA, the deadlines, when we can expect to hear back from them, as well as the many scholarships that he would have the opportunity to apply for. We were encouraged during this meeting to apply, especially for the local scholarships, which have a higher percentage of receiving the funds, and my son earned a total of five different scholarships. Four of those were local from Henderson County. So, we were very fortunate to be able to understand how the process worked, as well as the resources that West provided for us, to know which scholarships would best fit my son's needs. I found the slideshow and the resources they provided to be especially helpful, and referred to these throughout our time applying for scholarships and through the college application process. Thank you. Hi, my name is Jennifer, and my son...
Okay. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Putnam, our counselor from West Henderson.
Hi. Good evening. So, I won't go over what she just talked about with North because actually, we do the very same thing. We have a college, a college day, college career day, and pretty much what Ms. Alton said, they do, we do as well. So, I will highlight some other things that we do at West. We actually start the process for getting ready for the college month during late August, early September. We meet individually with every senior and talk to them about their individual plans, and specifically, you know, if they're going to go to college. We talk to them about the different colleges to apply to, that process, and also the financial aid and residency determination process as well. We do also have college reps who come in, and they will either set up during lunch, or they set up during one of the beginning of one of the class periods, so students can come down and meet with them to get more information. And then, each week during October, we do post webinars and resources from the CFNC website, and that was one of the things that Ms. Fur mentioned that helped her, some of the slides and things like that that we post. And then, Brenda Valdez, she is the CFNC representative for our region right now. I think that's about to change, but she is also going to come to our college and career event, but also she's going to come the following week and do a presentation. Brenda Valdez, she is the CFNC representative for our region right now. I think that's about to change. But she is also going to come to our college and career event, but also she's going to come the following week and do a presentation about financial aid, the residency determination, and scholarships. So that has been very helpful for our families. All right. And this is about the participating colleges and universities. There are approximately 50 colleges and universities, and all of the 58 community colleges that waive their application fees for their applicants during the CFNC week. And the following, the following, these are listed on the website if anybody wants to see those, but we don't have those attached. There's, through College Connect, there's 40 colleges that actually waive their fees. And then for transfers, there are an additional 40 as well. So just to let you see that there are a lot of schools students can apply to during this time that have free application fees, and it's anywhere from state schools to private schools. So there is a variety. And we encourage all of our students to take, all of our seniors to take advantage of that week. So the expected outcomes of having these, the application month, and the application week, and the CFNC month is all about FAFSA completion rates. We want to increase those because if students complete the FAFSA, then we know that it's more likely that they will go to college because they'll find out that they're going to receive some funds. More students are submitting college applications because we're, I encourage them to apply to not only a community college, but at least a few four-year universities as well. Higher matriculation rates, and also reduction in equity gaps for low-income and first-generation students.
So we are happy to answer any questions that you have, but for any parents, or students, or anybody else that has questions, we just encourage you to reach out to your counselors because they have all the information for you at the schools. Any questions?
Correct that you did two sessions for West last year on the FAFSA for families? I feel like you did two.
Yes, we did. We had this session. So we have the CFNC night with the regional representative, like Brenda Valdez, coming in. She presents. And then two weeks after that, we have the Blue Ridge Community College Director who comes, and he will have the help session, him and his staff. They stay for about two hours in our media center, and families come in. We had about 70 families at one point, one time. I think that was year before last. Last year was a little wonky with Helene. And then we have another one after the holidays, and we already have one scheduled with him in February.
Thinking you did too, because I remember getting the info for both of them. The one thing that I will say was exceptional about all of this is you taught my student how to navigate through a lot of this. You know, it used to, if you were going to fill out college applications and go through all of the process, it was, you know, parents had to do so much of the work. These kids are learning how to do that themselves, too, and how to look up the applications and all of the scholarship information. So it was really, it was really nice to be able to see how she was able to navigate through a lot of that, and you made that a, kind of a streamlined process. So it was nice to be able to see students more engaged in that process. So from everything that I saw that you guys did last year, everything went really well. So I appreciate everything that you guys do.
We have partnered with our economics and personal finance senior teachers, and they do a lot of talking about these steps to, to just back up what we talk to them about individually. Then they present as well in class to help them follow through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, getting through our agenda, we next come to board member observations. Board members, any observations?
So I just want to say, I appreciate, as a board member, so many of you come in here month after month. And when you walk through that door, I know that you are praying over not only us, but I know you're praying over our students. I know that Henderson County has a very strong, very deep and very strong leadership across the board, in our schools, in our churches, in our communities. And our students are being prayed over. Our schools are being prayed over, and I appreciate that. To those of you who wake up every morning and pray over each and every one of these students, to our resource officers who I know go in, you know, they start, our sheriff's department starts everything with their prayers, our commissioners do, county meetings do, and I appreciate that so much. We've seen a big turnaround in this nation recently, in the last month, after the horrible assassination of Charlie Kirk. A few days after that, I was standing in the middle of Hendersonville, and I watched a student, one of our students, 15-year-old young lady, stand up in front of hundreds of people with tears, and proclaimed that because of the shed blood of Jesus, she's going to heaven. And our students on our football fields are on their knees in prayer. Our teachers are praying over them. Our community members are praying over them. Our colleges, these students are getting together, and they are meeting, and they are praying, and they're doing it on their own. And I just want to say that I appreciate those that come in month after month, those that I know are walking the campuses of our schools and praying. I know it happens before every school year. I know it happens in the summer. I know it happens throughout the year. And I just want to say thank you to our community members.
Anybody else?
Yeah, and I didn't coordinate this with you. So I know we give, we give recognition as a quiet moment, but last month I had a prayer prepared, and the Lord said, "Don't do it just yet." And so, so I've got, I've got quite a bit to say, okay? So I give honor to the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords, and I am very grateful to be on this side of the completed work of Jesus Christ. My Shalom, oh de mor sheel yeshua. I invite you into this place, and thank you for your presence. Truly, all governments rest upon your shoulders. I ask for wisdom to guide our conversations and decisions. Amen. This past week has been a hard week. Even this past month has been hard. And there's much to be thankful for and much to give compassionate attention to. I say that I'm grateful for the leadership of this county, of these, of these schools, to step into a role that goes beyond their description. It's an understatement, just to say that I'm thankful because it's just amazing to watch and sad to see, but I'm very thankful for our leadership in our schools. There's a major, capital major, missing around us, one that was removed by the Supreme Court in 1962. When I took an oath of this office, I was committed to every word. That being said, I would like to share with you the ABCs of the Ecclesia. Most of us know it as the Church. This was written, I just got this, this past weekend, by Charles Billingsley. A lot of you guys listen to probably some of his music. He's a great author, a great songwriter. A, we will not be afraid. B, we will not back down, back up, or back out. C, we will not cower in the face of evil. D, we will not dilute, deny, or disguise the truth. E, we will not move forward, we will move forward with excellence, energy, and not exclude anyone from our message of hope. F, we will face our fears with faith. G, we will not give in to the winds and the whelms of culture. H, we will not hold back. I, we will not be intimidated. J, we will fight for justice and live for Jesus. K, we will build His kingdom. L, we will love our God and love our neighbors. M, we will stay on mission. N, we will help the needy. O, we will offer, offer all of ourselves and all we have when necessary. P, we will pray, and pray some more, for revival across this land, for the power of the Holy Spirit, and for boldness. Q, we will never quit. R, I will not rest, we will not rest until everyone has heard the gospel. S, we will speak the truth, stand, stand up for righteousness, and daily surrender our hearts to our Savior, Jesus Christ. T, we will trust the Lord God Almighty to guide us, protect us, and use us. U, we will stay under the authority of God's Word, seek to understand the mind and heart of the lost, but never undermine the power of His Word. V, we will not play the victim, because in Christ we are all victors. W, we will not whimper in difficult times, nor will we waver from the truth. X, can you believe there's a word for X? I will be Zenilla. Zenial, Zenial, there we go. To those who hate, that word actually means to be kind instead of. We will not year, yield to temptation of the evil one. Z, we will preach the gospel with our lives, with all the zeal of the martyrs who have gone before us. Thank you. I would also like to extend an invitation to parents and guardians for an informational meeting, October 16th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at Attawal Lines Club. I will be revisiting and reviewing policies that even we're going to go over tonight, and a short tutorial of how to navigate the Henderson County Public School website. So I encourage you to come. If you'd like more information, feel free to email me. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? I just want to say that I was able to go on a school board tour this week, this past week, and, or last week, actually, on Wednesday. And we went to Rugby Middle School, was really excited about getting into those classrooms, but learned that there was testing going on, and so we weren't able to do that. But I just want to say how much I appreciate Dr. McDarris talking to us about what all is going on in his school. And I think I shared with Superintendent, that gentleman can talk teaching and learning very deeply and comprehensively. And so I am just so glad that we have that type of leadership in our schools. But that was a great visit, even though we didn't get to see students. Anyone else?
Yeah, briefly. Of course, this is just my second meeting, and I do want to tell everyone, thank you so much for being so kind and generous in welcoming me to the board. So I do appreciate that. When I got to go to Hendersonville, I went to Hendersonville Elementary School with Mr. Craven this week, and I don't know as much about the city schools, obviously, as I do the county schools. And so Ms. Henderson was just so welcoming. It was nice to see those teachers and that staff as well. But one thing that's definitely been on my heart, and I know I've talked to several of you about it, but, you know, it is our teacher pay, and how we can make sure that our folks are taken care of. And so that's just, I just want to put it out there that that is something that is definitely on my heart, something I'm going to continue to talk about with you guys, and how we prep and plan. Also, when we talk about our schools, we have several, if you don't know, that have made it, they're going to the conference tournaments, and they were just conference champions, a lot of them. So, and I know I'll miss somebody, but it's throughout, you know, our whole district, and that is a huge accomplishment. But with that, you know, time is money, and many of our coaches, if they start making it to playoffs, actually don't make money above and beyond. They're obviously not doing it for that, they love that, but that is something that also is on my heart that I want to talk about at another point as well. But just so y'all know, that's kind of where my heart is. But I did enjoy going to Hendersonville Elementary School.
Okay, moving along, we're now to public comments. I think I have about four or five public comments, and I will take these in the order that they have been handed to me. And we would ask that you please contain your remarks to the three minutes allowed time. And we will start with Donna Owens. Donna, you want to step to the-
Sorry. Ezekiel, of the Old Testament, was a prophet, called by God, to a job to proclaim God's message to mostly hostile ears. He was called to remind the people that God is merciful, but he also is called to remind them he is a God of justice. And he said to me, "Son of man," I'm, I'm reading from God's Word. And he said to me, "Son of man, I am sending you to the children of Israel, to a rebellious nation that has rebelled against me. They and their fathers have transgressed against me to this very day. And you, son of man, do not be afraid of them. Do not be afraid of their words, though through, though briars and thorns are with you, you dwell amongst scorpions. And do not be afraid of their words, or dismayed by their looks, though they are a rebellious house. Son of man, I have made you a watchman over the house of Israel. Therefore, hear a word from my mouth, and give them warning from me, when I say to the wicked, you shall surely die. And you give me, give him no warning, nor speak to warn the wicked from his wicked way, to save his life, that same wicked man shall die in his inequity, but his blood I require at your hand. Yet, if you warn the wicked, and he does not turn from his wickedness, nor from his wicked way, he shall die in his iniquity, but you have delivered your soul. Again, when the righteous man turns from his righteousness and commits iniquity, and I lay a stumbling block before him, he shall die. Because you did not give him a warning, he shall die in his sin, and his righteousness, which he has done, shall not be remembered, but his blood I will require at your hand. Nevertheless, if you warn the righteous man, that the righteous should not sin, and he does not sin, he shall surely live, because he took warning. And also, you have delivered your soul." We have a promise in 2nd Chronicles 7:14, verse 14. God says, "If my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sin and heal their land." Our land needs to be healed. We have violence and hatred coming in all around us, and politicians, and plans, and programs by men will not heal our nation. It takes all of us to repent of anything that we have done wrong, see God's face, and God will be faithful and true to heal our land, because His promises are true. Thank you.
Joyce Mars Taylor?
You might remember that last month, well, I hardly remember last week, but you might remember last month when we talked about the children, and how God loves the children, and how the Holy Spirit and Jesus said them for St. Mathem coming unto me. Well, this, this month, it appears we didn't even, we came up with different scriptures, but same idea, of the school board being responsible for the children. Jesus loves the children. The school board is responsible for protecting the children. And we asked Father God that they were just, you, each one of you, you are, you are so important. You're, you're not just a, a person taking up a seat. You have real input. You can look into situations I don't know about. Oh my goodness, last, last month, this wonderful man at the end there, who had all that math problems, oh, I mean, I'd have given up and gone home and forgotten the whole thing. But you did a wonderful job. And I just asked Father God that we'd all realize that there's nothing too small, or nothing too big. There's only one truth, not my truth, not your truth, His truth. And He stands on the truth, and you can't lose. You know, if you, if you, if you live a holy Christian life, and you do right, and you forgive people, and you love them, now, just because we love them doesn't mean we have to agree with them. But we do have to love them, because it's not them we're fighting. It's a spirit. It's a, it's an anger that comes into them and say, "We've got to win, we've got to win at all costs, even over a man's life, shot, for speaking the truth." And we asked Father God that our truth will come from you, because that's the only kind that doesn't sink. That's the only kind of truth you can stand on. That's the only kind of truth that is real. And at night, you can sleep good because you know you've done what you can for the children, and for the, the possibility of raising them. And we've done a good job. You know, we, I mean, you guys have, but I agree with you. You've done a great job from what I know. I don't know a whole lot, but I do know that you have the hearts in the right place, and you want what's- and you want what's best for the children. All of us do. Every one of us here wants exactly what's good for the kids. And it's not an anger, it's not something that we come against each other, it's something that, that we love each other and can get past not agreeing, and getting in an agreeable place, and sit down and talk to each other. Sometimes you just forget about how important the words are, and mine are running out. So God bless you, thank you so much for what you do, in Jesus' name.
Chair Silvias?
Hello. I just want to, after listening to all those awards that went out to the teachers and principals, what a blessing, and good role models for our children, and thank you for lifting them up, and I do pray that their examples will be exemplified to others. I wanted to talk about a couple of policies that you're going to be implementing change with, and one of them was about the library books, and parents having access to them provided on the website homepage. How will staff know how to restrain a child from certain books when there are hundreds of them that are not appropriate? So I'm appreciative of you doing that, but there's still a problem that we need to address with the amount of books that are inappropriate. So I think it's going to be difficult for staff, even for a parent, and how are parents even going to know to look for these books? So that's one issue that I want to bring to a point. The other thing is, I'm grateful for this policy changing from making, it says that a school received parental permission before allowing students to share sleeping quarters with a member of the other biological sex. I find it kind of repulsive that we even have to have that come before us, to put that and implement that, but I'm grateful that we are. But I also ask, how are the parents going to learn about this? I know you have it on the website, the Parental Bill of Rights, but how are parents going to know the detail of that? So that's a question, and I'm thankful to know that Ms. Sheila Dale was going to have this open format, and maybe this will be a way, but those are questions that I have. As I went through the policies, there's many, many policies that I just think parents are unaware of. The other thing I wanted to bring about is for a parent who has an autistic child in, in one of your schools, for PE, he doesn't know boundaries, and so he's let out into the play yard, and there's no fence. So how, how is he protected? I can talk to you about more detail on that, but that was something that teachers brought to the parents' attention, that he doesn't stay in the play yard while he's autistic, and he doesn't know those boundaries. So I don't know if you guys have fenced in areas for children like that, so thank you very much.
Joe Elliott?
First, I'd like to wish everyone a blessed Indigenous Peoples' Day. We've been a hundred days, and the General Assembly has not been able to pass a budget. They have time to strip power from the governor, the man we all elected, and cede that power to the state auditor, who, by the way, did not receive a single vote to be governor of North Carolina. And the General Assembly has also had time to try to further gerrymander the state, when all the data suggests that most of the people that live here do not want more gerrymandering. So they're spending their time doing things other than what they are, should be doing, which is passing a budget. I call it fiddling while Rome is burning. Teachers and state employees go without a pay increase, school districts, state agencies, and other organizations that rely on state funding are left to operate at last year's funding levels. Rising costs alone are creating shortfalls for a lot of people across the state. Medicaid reimbursements are going to put a lot of people at jeopardy very, very quickly in the first of October. Some of these people lost their funding. And what is the General Assembly doing? Well, they play juvenile political games designed to grab more political power, while schools, teachers, students, and medical recipients suffer the consequences. Then we have vouchers. Since the program started, private schools have received $1.2 billion in taxpayer funds, and we, this county has lost over $10 million over the last 10 years to voucher programs. I'm guessing some of you consider our representatives in Raleigh, Moffett, Balcom, and Johnson to be friends. Folks, they are not our friends. They cynically assure us that they have our backs while they go to Raleigh and vote repeatedly in their party's interests, not ours. If they cannot vote for the needs of our schools, our teachers, and our kids, they are abrogating their responsibility to our community, plain and simple. There, this is one of those times where there is no middle ground. They need to step up and take care of us, our kids, our schools, and do away with the partying. Thank you.
And last, excuse me, Paul Weiselman? I'm sorry, I just cannot read your writing. Pronounce your name, please.
Weiselman. Okay, General Assembly is now considering HB 775, requiring expanded criminal background checks and enhanced reporting requirements for traditional public and charter school employees, independent contractors, but not for private school personnel. Why? Whose safety and privacy is being protected, or perhaps shielded? Private schools currently only have a requirement for one staff member with the highest decision-making authority to pass a background check, even if the school accepts state voucher funds. The Superintendent of Public Instruction in Raleigh and our own board should take this opportunity to enthusiastically invite parents to send their children to our public schools, where their safety is taken very seriously. On this theme of student safety, it's extremely disheartening to see how our neighbor, Upstate South Carolina, has allowed disregard for public health to lead to a measles outbreak, putting at risk thousands of children for becoming ill, spreading the disease more widely is a risk, and suffering consequences of a serious and sometimes fatal illness. Let the board and all of us affirm North Carolina's schedule of required vaccinations. Per the State Department of Public Instruction website, school principals and childcare operators are responsible for enforcing state immunization laws for school entry. With limited exceptions, this applies to all school settings, including homeschooling. Whether South Carolina is lax or misinformed by perverse valuing of so-called personal freedoms over our shared public health is subject to further research and evaluation. There is a troubling connection between these two developments, HB 775 and this measles outbreak. HB 775 appears to defer to the goodness of miscellaneous people who run private schools, substituting their authority for the public good of adequate background checks. In the case of measles outbreaks, since Prince of falsehoods Kennedy became Secretary of U.S. Health and Human Services, there's no amount of reliable, comprehensive, and duplicable research that suffices when a gullible search on one's smartphone can convince one to substitute snake oil for vaccines that protect us all. Do your own research is a synonym for let yourself be bamboozled. Protecting our children is the work of parents, communities, schools, healthcare professionals, and others. Failure to protect our children from the real risks due to misplaced priorities is a failure that can have grave consequences.
All right, that concludes our public comments. And Board members, we are now to the consent agenda. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved, and now we are down to old business. Mr. Taylor, a facility study update.
Good afternoon, Board members. Hope you're having a good day. And so for our facility study, if you recall, back in the spring, the board requested that we pursue looking into updating our facility study that was completed in 2019. So I want to walk through the steps that we have taken, where we're at today, and then receive direction from the board. And so again, just going back in the past, back in 2019 is when Novus completed the previous facility study on all of our facilities. And unfortunately, when we received that facility study, at that point was when COVID was about to hit, so we kind of got a double whammy with the numbers that were given to us. The numbers really weren't useful in terms of budgeting with the items that the study revealed to us. So while the numbers weren't good, at least the list of projects that needed to be completed were of value to us. And so that facility study, since its completion, has been used to guide decisions when it comes to our capital outlay budget and our MRTS budget as well. And so when we look since that time, over 50 items that were in that facility study have been completed through those two budgets. We also have 39 additional items that have been identified to be completed between now and 2033. And so that facility study has been useful, even though the budget side of it was missing. So as we look at the timeline for this current facility study effort that we've gone through, back in April is when we requested qualifications for companies that were interested in completing a facility study for us. We interviewed all of the firms that submitted a proposal to us, and then from that, we presented to the board that LS 3P was our recommendation, and the board approved us going ahead and entering into contract negotiations with them. The initial proposal that they provided to us in June came in at a budget number just shy of $250,000. And so at that point, we decided to go back and try to refine the study, to drill into what we really needed from it. And so that's what we did through the months of July and August. And then just towards the end of September is when we received a revised proposal from LS 3P. So in terms of refining that study, what we did is we took our campuses and broke them up into three tiers, working with Chad Dillon, our Director of Facilities and Maintenance, to identify, you know, what campuses caused the greatest concern for him in our maintenance department. And so from that, we identified Apple Valley, Bruce Drysdale, East Henderson, Henderson Elementary, and North Henderson as the campuses that really needed a comprehensive evaluation. So this would require LS 3P and their team to go to those campuses, really do a thorough walkthrough to evaluate the current conditions of those campuses. From there, we, Tier 2 is targeted, so Chad was able to work with us to identify things that they really need to look at. It wasn't a whole encompass review of those campuses, it was just look at these items and create budget numbers for those identified items. And then from the Tier 3 budget evaluation, it's just them giving us updated numbers on the remaining projects at those remaining sites that were from the 2019 study. And so not looking for anything new, but just saying, give us good numbers when it comes to the, the identified projects for those sites. So when we look at just that refined proposal, the LS 3P updated number that they gave us was a little over $155,000. So a significant reduction, but still a hefty price tag to complete just that work as well. And so when we look about moving forward from here with that budget number, what we see is kind of, we have three options. One is to continue revising, trying to refine the scope of the work, to reduce it to some capacity to continue to bring that number down. A second option is to wait and just look to hire an architect on an as-needed basis to evaluate projects that this board approves us to pursue. And the third one is to proceed with what they have given us at that little over $150,000 number.
So the purpose of this agenda item was to present these options. As you know, we've been working on this for quite a while, and wanted to bring you in to have the opportunity to weigh in and provide your guidance as to how you would like the administration to proceed. There could be another option out there, but as we sat down and looked at everything, these were the three that we came up with. So we can revise further, wait, do things on a project-by-project basis, or proceed. One of the good things that you have in your favor is that you have a facilities plan laid out, you have replacement plans in place, and you have a lot of these things already done as far as what you want to do first, second, and third. So I think that you have any of these three options available to you, and just wanted to get your guidance.
Couple questions. Number one, what was our first budget, budgeted amount for the study? Hundred grand, right? These are rhetorical, sorry.
What was it?
$100,000 is what we initially have in our budget for this. So if you were to proceed with the revised proposal, where would the extra $55,006 come from?
Well, that was where you could ask to revise, if you wanted to, your MRTS funding, because that is some flexible funding that could be used for that with, with, yeah, there's some contingency stuff, there's some rollover, product rollover money in there from previously, previous fiscal years. Or you could look at a local source, that would be your two options.
Can you go into a little bit more depth on comprehensive targeted versus budget? What, what, what does that look like?
Yes, so for those campuses, for the comprehensive evaluation, that would be them really inspecting the entire facility to identify what they see at the current time as needs that need to be addressed. So they would use the 2019 as a reference, but also doing their own evaluation of those sites.
Does that bring instructional engineers? Is that hiring any type of outside experts that can, that can really take through those properties?
Yes, sir, that would be a deep dive into each one of those campuses.
And then what's targeted?
That's where, working with Mr. Dillon, we identified known needs at those sites, so it wouldn't require them necessarily going there and doing a comprehensive or a thorough evaluation of the site. It's just going to, if they need to go, go look at these individual items, and that's it, that he has identified as known areas that are going to have to be addressed at those sites.
The budget is just reevaluating the budget of what we already have?
Yes.
So essentially, we're paying $155,000 for them to go into five schools?
The, so the, the five for the comprehensive, they, those are known visits, yes. For the second tier, potentially, they would need to do a visit if they had to lay eyes on what we identified as needing to be done.
And then number three would be a desktop evaluation.
Okay, and so... Okay, so on the targeted, if it's needed to go in, how, how have they priced that? Like, is there more of a charge if they actually have to go in and do some work, or if we identify something, or is that included in that price? Or, that seems like, if you tell me probably, that's usually to me like is a no, like it's not going to get done. So what does that actually pay for?
The $155,000?
Yeah.
So it, it pays for all the people that you've already identified to work on evaluating each of those sites, as we've asked them to do?
Just seems excessive.
Yes, a lot of money.
With the targeted, if we, if we know those are areas of concern, why do we need to pay somebody to come tell us their areas of concern?
To help us with a budget number. So as we look down the road with our MRTS and with our capital outlay, that information allows us to know, again, here's what the ballpark is, and where, how the pieces are going to fit together within what we know is, you know, currently capital outlay is $1.5 million, MRTS is currently $4.6 million, and so each year, we know we've got $6.1 million that we get to identify and address projects, and so it's helping us map those out, hopefully. And so it's helping us map those out, hopefully, over the next 10 years.
So are they giving us costs on each project that they're looking at when they go into these schools? If they go in on these targeted evaluations, does that mean they're physically going in and saying, this is what you need to do, or we can provide you with estimated costs for each of those projects? Like, are they going that far?
So, you know, for an example, so let's take, you know, Tier One, East Henderson High School. One project that I know is going to have to be evaluated at some point in time in the near future is their HVAC system. And so for this, if we were to hire them to do this, they would go in and evaluate. So here's the current condition of it, here would be the recommendation, and here's the budget number of how, what that would cost to do that work. Target Two, Atkinson, for example, would be, you know, potentially window replacement. So, you know, not quite as comprehensive in terms of having to go and evaluate, but from there, again, giving us a cost estimate of what it's going to take to do that type of work.
So on that type of thing, that, the part that bothers me, let's say we are looking at the HVAC and we think it needs to be replaced, well, can't we just do an RFP, a request for proposal, from three or four different HVAC companies and get the same thing for free?
So you can. What would typically happen is you would do an RFQ for an engineer.
Sure.
To then go in and make sure that the systems balance, they match, and get the exact specifications of the system that you need. And we have done that. We did that with our gym upsets using the Esser money. We managed those projects internally, and that's what we did. We went with an engineer who had a ton of HVAC experience. He came up, he designed, worked with Chad on balancing those systems out, and helped us do the bid process for the RFPs.
So I think the problem that I have with RFQs in general is that, okay, you get these requests for qualifications from various firms or various whatevers to say, hey, we can do this work. But then, once you whittle it down to that one person, they got you, right? That's who you're working with. To me, an RFP is much better, even on this study. Let's send out an RFP, let's get back some prices. If it's over our price, hey, we're not doing it with anybody, right? Because we've got us a set budget. Right now, I feel like they've got us kind of captive on $250,000. Oh, we'll knock off $45,000 because we'll do a desk update of Clear Creek or Dana. It just doesn't feel, it doesn't really sit right.
Well, and what I don't understand is that for $250,000, they do 23 sites, or 22 sites, I guess. But then for $150,000, they're really doing five. They might do some stuff at four. I mean, I just, is it essential to have this information in order for us to do a long-range plan?
It is, so your long-range plan is in place now. Your order of which you want to attack these projects is already there, and it is cast out through 2031, and we can continue to do that. So that is why, when we go to the options, you could hire an architect on an as-needed basis when you decide to move forward with a project or a site, much like Mr. Craven really is suggesting. Now, you do have another option here, and that is because it is an RFQ, you could go to one of the other firms, say you couldn't come to terms with your first selection, you could go to the number-two selection based on the rubric, which I don't remember off the top of my head what that was, and try to do this same process. But to your point, Mr. Craven, what you come down to, once you do an RFQ, is then you negotiate.
Then you're negotiating price at that point.
And the pricing, which is essentially the pricing.
Because they've already won. And they know that most, if not all governmental agencies are not going to go back and spend the next three months going back through that whole process, or however long it is, and they could throw whatever number out that they want. And I just feel like it's a waste of time, to be perfectly honest. And I think that if you have, we've got a roadmap right now. If we know that we need to seal off East, and we know that we need to get rid of the trailers out in the front yard, and the HVAC needs to be replaced, well, hire somebody that does that type of work, or bring folks in and do a request for proposal for that type of work, see what your prices are, and then make your determination at that point, right? I just think RFQ is just the wrong way of going about this.
And I can say-
And I say, my vote is to not spend the $155,000.
And I will say that we feel very comfortable with the wait and to go on an as-project basis.
Yeah.
You know, you've got a very good process already in place. We are keeping up with that every time something gets completed and fixed. We are adding small things, not just big comprehensive things. So for you to sit and say, at budget time, for example, how do we want to focus our MRTS money for the next fiscal year?
Yeah.
We would go to this same document. The document is a good document.
Yeah, it's just the pricing.
The problem is the pricing.
And that's fine.
And that gives you the opportunity as a board to say, this is what we want to do, and hire somebody actually to update your pricing if you wanted to.
I think what this came out of was our last facility study, right? And we wanted to get some more, and it's really born out of East. East needs a lot of work. And I think we need to focus on that, because let's be honest, we can go through here and we can find $200 million worth of things that we need to fix in our schools. The problem is, you're not going to pay for it. And so that document means nothing, because you're only going to do the top 10% or whatever the number is.
Big fires.
Right? That's it, that's all you're going to do. And so it would be, it's of my opinion that we don't go through with this. And if we want to hire or send out an RFQ or an RFP or whatever for East on specific things, then that's what we do.
So which option are you going to make?
My option is, yeah, wait. Don't do anything.
And I can second that.
I'm in agreement.
I agree.
I agree.
That's-
I think we already have a roadmap, I think, yeah.
We need official vote on that, or we-
A form of a motion would be very helpful, since you-
Before I make the motion-
-had us get this study done.
Have we asked them to take, because I know Novus is no longer a firm, but the principal that was at Novus, works at LS3P now, right? Is there any way to just get updated pricing? How much is the updated pricing of that book that we did five years ago cost? That can't cost that much, right?
Right, except they will not sign off on that-
Because they don't own it.
Because they don't own the study. This is a different organization, and they don't want to guarantee anything that someone else did, which I can understand.
Yeah, they don't guarantee it anyways. The lawyers write everything up, and they don't guarantee you those numbers.
The lawyer has something to say with that.
Let's hear it.
So there is another option, and that option is, your friends just across the border in Transylvania, the county hired a reserve study firm that was a construction price firm to come in and do an evaluation. So you could look at that same option to take your 2019 list. There are folks that will put a price-
That's what I thought.
-to those projects. Architects understandably don't want to do that, because they're in the business of designing and owning it.
Yeah.
But there are plenty of companies out there that'll take your list and give you updated pricing. And I can give, or you can just call the county manager in Transylvania County. I think they had a very good experience, and the board, the school board and the county came together, and they're actually using that list to prioritize the bond funding.
I think that's-
So there's an example of one company where that worked really well.
Wasn't that part of the idea, too, of this whole thing is, I mean, we're pretty, your team is pretty on top of our day-to-day, what our schools need. We have that information, but it would be helpful to have cost changes from 2019 to now, to be able to have that to look at.
I think that the document that we have, if you've never seen it, you need to look through it, it's going to take you a couple weeks to go through it. I mean, it's a thick document, but it is every nut, bolt, and screw in all of our schools. And I think we have a pretty good handle on it. If we could, maybe, maybe this board needs to look at what our, go back through our priority list. I know that East is on there, and I'm talking about major priorities, not changing the controls or the little stuff, right? Major priorities, we get through this bus garage, which we're going to hopefully get done here pretty soon, get started on pretty soon. What's the next goal? Is that East? All right, well, let's go out and let's price East. Let's figure out what we want to do as a board, what does that look like? Let's go find somebody to price that. And I think that would be a perfect way for us to do that, maybe for the next couple of years worth of projects. I think 10 years, it gets a little bit funky, because it's just too much.
As volatile as your market is now-
It's just, doesn't matter.
Forecasting pricing is very, very tenuous.
Yeah, and if you're looking at, hey, I want to price on a school that we may or may not build in 10 or 15 years, for what? For what? So-
That 2019 document, is that like a live document that's updated?
I have a good question.
So that we can take out what we don't need anymore, what's already been handled, what's been changed since the storm, and that changed some things in there? So is that something live that you can go in and just change, or is it just, you know, oh?
So the document itself is not something that we edit, but what we have done in working, again, with Mr. Dillon, is to go through it and identify, you know, through 2033, what are the priorities from this document? What are the things, in his opinion, that are going to have to be addressed within that timeframe? And oftentimes, we're talking about chillers, we're talking about boilers, as kind of those big-ticket items. And so that's how we kind of keep track of it, of mapping it out. And then I just keep a running list of what from the tenure facility document have we completed. So it's just basically a table with the list.
Yeah, he sent it out.
He sends it out every budget, every budget season when we start talking about MRTS, that's where that list comes from. But what's not on there are your big-ticket items. So for example, we scroll back to the schools, the study refinements. So HES, take that for an example. When we were looking at that, the school's too small. And so we had talked about building a wing onto the edge of the school. Well, that's clearly not on that document, that build a wing. Rugby was the same thing. Rugby was starting to bust at the seams. So do you build a wing on the end of that? Do you use some of the property, whatever? It has some of those type of things in there as well. But I think it might behoove us at some point in time to have some type of workshop to go through that specifically. And I'm talking about the big-ticket items, not to go through, hey, at some point, you know, we've got the study from NC State, we know where the population's growing up in Mills River, it's not really growing so much in Flat Rock or East Flat Rock. So what do we need to do here or there to alleviate how packed Mills River is? How, I mean, it's, we're getting into a lot of stuff there, but-
So that top line, if you look, Apple Valley, North Henderson, built and occupied in 1993, you've done nothing major to them except for some chiller work and some HVAC work in that time, and you added a wing, the T building. So that's why those two would need a more comprehensive, because you've not needed to really dig into those, they were some of your newer facilities till recently. Bruce Drysdale and HES, both very aged facilities, with some challenges on their campuses as to what you could do to expand. And then East Henderson High School, built in 1960, with a couple of additions over time, but have those concerns that we talk about, about the disconnected buildings and some of the other pieces that y'all have talked about as a board. So that's why those five are at the top. Atkinson, Flat Rock middle, rugby, and upward. So Flat Rock and rugby are the same age, both in, I guess, 1971 or two, when we occupied those. Atkinson, 1982, and then upward, I don't have off the top of my head, so don't mark me down too bad on my evaluation for that. But I think it is a 93 as well. So those are the ones that haven't had some major work within the last 30 years or so. So, you know, as we think about those priorities, I don't think that you necessarily need somebody to come in and tell us that, you already know that instinctively and just by doing the numbers. One of the other things that we do, that you may or may not remember, is every five years, for Department of Public Instruction, we do a comprehensive review of all of our facilities, where we put when they were built, when they were added on to, when they were renovated, what's the square footage, all the things that go into that. So that should be coming up, is it this year? I think it's, I think it's in the spring of this year that we'll do that. So we'll be digging into those very heavily, too. So moving into budget season, which is always earlier and earlier, when we talk about our budget season, this would be the perfect time to take each of those and go through, whether you're talking about that Novus study, the updated list that we have put together on our major, our major systems replacements that we've got in there, roofs, parking lots, all of those things, and kind of match, mix and match where those go on those campus facilities. So we feel comfortable with the wait and go as you prioritize as a board, but just wanted to make sure that, since you all commissioned the study and commissioned this action to let you know where we stood, and we're happy to move forward in whatever way you see fit.
Do we need a motion on this?
Yeah. Well, and I would, what you said about getting together and going through some things, I would love to see us be able to do that, because I think there's a lot of stuff that we don't really get a chance to dig into when it comes to this stuff.
No, for sure. I think that-
Would we do that maybe like in January? Because that's slower than when we start digging into budget.
That'd be great. I think a capital look of everything would be great, and I think it's needed sooner rather than later. If, you know, we had talked about in our open session, talked about having our facility study group get together, I think you need to do that before sending three folks across the street to start talking about your facilities. So if there's a motion needed, I'll make a motion that we wait to hire an architect on an as-needed basis to evaluate our sites. Also, I would like to direct the administration to engage with the construction manager at risk. Is that what you called it?
So what they did, and I was just researching it, I was trying to find the dollar amount, but I couldn't. So what they did in Transylvania County is they got three proposals. I've sent you all three proposals that they got for these reserve studies. These groups went physically to every single school. They went with county officials and school officials, and they toured every single school. Then they came back and they developed a list for every school, prices to go with that, and then categorized it, life safety, critical needs, things of that nature. And then the county and the school board was able to use that list. So they basically did what you're talking about without the involvement of an architect at all. So you might want, not trying to preempt your motion, but you might want to let Mr. Garrett look into these groups.
That's what I want to do.
I'm okay with that.
And then come back to you, and you don't need a motion for that.
What I'm on the motion is that we're done with this.
We're done with this.
Yeah, you don't need a motion for that.
All right, my motion is, I withdraw my first motion, and I'll make another motion, that we wait to hire an architect on an as-needed basis to evaluate sites.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Motion carries.
So for clarity, we're done with this piece.
You're done with this piece.
Okay, we will move forward.
But we're not done.
Right, no, no, we're never done.
We're not done with that.
We're never done.
We're done with the rest.
We're never done.
Okay.
You're very welcome.
Moving on. Mr. Taylor, are you ready to tackle all these policies?
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
Come roll, please.
Remind everyone that we did have an ad hoc committee, a policy committee of the board, and that was Mrs. Dale, Mrs. Campbell, and Mrs. Norman, were you, I think-
Yeah, I wasn't able to-
But you gave input.
Correct, yeah, Carl and I spoke before that.
And so we've all seen these policies, these are not coming to us just the first time. We've all had these policies at least a week, week and a half. I think you've sent them out two weeks, haven't you? Probably. So we have had time as a board to ask questions and get clarification on things. So we may be seemingly running through these pretty quickly, but we have studied these on our own time quite in depth. So with that said, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, so the only thing I'll add to that is, when we look at these updates, the bulk of these are special updates as a result of laws that were passed over the summer by the General Assembly. Two that I'll highlight that were not part of the special update are Policy 2110 and 2115. Those are two policies that are being updated locally, since the board is now partisan. And so it's addressing partisan election, and it's addressing what to do if a board member is replaced under the partisan election process now. So those are two that I'll highlight as being updated from a local standpoint. But from there, again, everything else is from a general statute standpoint in terms of the rest of the updates. And so I don't know if Ms. Campbell, Ms. Dell, or Ms. Norman have anything that you want to specifically share with the board in terms of what we reviewed and what we discussed.
I know there was question about the policy referring to the sleeping quarters and the field trips, and we had talked about that in length, and that was one that you had discussed, too. Can you just provide clarity that that's, one, not something that is happening and doesn't happen, hasn't happened, and isn't going to be allowed to happen? And just make sure that we cover that one, because that one is one that will raise some eyebrows.
Certainly can.
Thank you.
And so that update shows up in Policies 1310, 4002, 3320, and 3620 is the three policy updates where that phrasing is going to show up. Again, this is stemming from an addition or a part of general statute, and so it's not something that we locally are just deciding to throw into policy, it was given to us from general statute. It was given to us from general statute. And what it is saying that is when we are, have a school trip where students are going to share sleeping quarters, that those quarters must be shared by students of the same biological sex, unless one of two things happens. One is that they are of the same immediate family, or parents of all parties involved provide permission. But again, as we shared in our policy committee, principals have the ultimate discretion when it comes to school trips, and we actually talked about this pending update when we met with principals last week, in that it's our expectation that, yes, that, you know, when we have school trips, the students of the same biological sex are the ones who are sharing rooms, and that if ever a request was made to them to go against that, then they reach out to us immediately.
This was my, one of my main questions that I had for Mr. Taylor when we spoke before. And while I am fine with the changes of the wording that it would require, of course, parental permission, my one concern was that I was just wanting to make sure there was some oversight on our end, that it wouldn't in fact just be parents giving permission, because you could think about even like a couple dating. Some parents may be just as fine with their, you know, students sharing a room overnight. However, that's not something that I, as a board member, would ever want. Or, you know, I didn't want that to get lost in translation, that all it takes is just parents. So I wanted to make sure that there was also some very clear oversight. I would personally prefer in our policies that it also stated that it would require principal permission as well, but that's just my, I, I love it to specifically black and white state it. I don't, I'm not concerned that it's not happening. Like you said, I think you guys are on it. We have, you know, great administration, teacher involvement. I just would, I would prefer it to say it. However, I do want it to be known that there will be a lot of oversight. That was my only concern.
We want to make it clear to the parent.
As in 10 years from now, when I'm not involved, you know, I just, I just wanted to make it clear, it takes more than just, I wanted a principal having to check it as well, but that makes me more comfortable, but.
The school assigns the.
Correct, and maybe it's, maybe it goes without being said, that was my, my biggest thing, question to him was, I just wanted to make very clear that someone was overseeing this, correct? But that was our, our biggest discussion, and he explained all of it to me, just like you did.
So I don't think that's out of the question to actually restate it in another way where it's actually solidifying that, that request, that there's more oversight on that, on that option of not having the ability or the possibility of boyfriend-girlfriend. So I don't know how we could do that, but I agree with that. I think that's a good oversight.
It just, I don't, because we discussed this, too, I just, I don't want to see us leave room for things to be interpreted differently on something that could potentially cause a much bigger issue.
We can add a sentence, correct, to these.
Well, you could, but look at the sentence before, because I'm always going to point out, when you laser focus on some things, you kind of leave questions in other areas. It says, "The superintendent shall develop procedures to ensure parents are given proper notice of trip details, and the parents provide signed authorization and consent regarding participation and care during the trip. This can be handled administratively through the field trip request forms."
Through procedure.
So, yeah, so I would just recommend that the superintendent's heard the discussion, he understands the concerns, and I think it can be addressed. You speak, obviously, for yourself, and I think it can be handled that way.
This has not been an issue because of the procedural things that our schools have in place, when they talk about room assignments, travel, et cetera, but that's where we can.
And you could make it clear that, you know, any participation of students of the same sex in a room has to have administrative approval. That can be in the, the, the things that go out to the parents in the permission forms. So I would just let the superintendent handle it through procedure, rather than making, because I don't, again, want, you know, as your attorney, regardless of the topic, is just remember, again, this is required by the General Assembly. So when you start making changes in policy, as there are additional changes, it could have complications down the road. That's not a reason not to do it. I'm just saying if it can be handled through the procedures, that is always going to be my recommendation, is let the superintendent handle it through procedures.
And that is.
It gets you to the same place.
It's a much more nimble process to make that happen. And two, I think it's worth the public knowing that this did not come up as a change because it had been happening.
Correct.
It came up as a change to align with the state law. So when we do these updates, especially the big policy updates from the spring, summer, and then we'll have another one this spring from the fall policy updates, it is all of those alignment with whatever general statute is at the time. So as far as the flexibility to make sure that that clarity is in there, which has always been practiced in, in my time, in, as a superintendent anyway, we can do that in those procedures very easily.
Mr. Garrett, how often do the procedures change?
Well, we review them each year and make sure that our high school and middle school principals and elementary principals are aware of any of those procedural changes. We have, we have a format, and they pull from the same, so they use the same forms. Elementary uses the same form, middle uses the same form, high school uses the same form. So we make those adjustments here that are reflected on those forms.
And when does the public know about that? When do, when do we know about that, when there's changes? Say like someone comes in years to come and says, okay, we're going to change that.
Typically only when there's a question or an issue.
Any more questions about this policy?
No, I appreciate it. I, I wasn't remotely doubting our administration's involvement. So I think as long as we make it explicitly clear of what our expectations, it's known to the public, it's known to the team, that that's not, it doesn't just require a simple field trip sign and now. So I'm fine with not adding it, as long as, you know, everyone's very clear that that's the expectation is, is also the, the oversight of that.
All right, and, and are we going to take these policies one by one and go through them, or can we do them collectively at the end? I, I was kind of thinking with as many, with as many as we have, if there are any policies that you, you as a board member have some concern about, you know, we need to talk about it now, and then we will vote on those 14 policies.
As one.
Together, as one, if, if that's okay. Anybody else have anything that they want to talk about, or questions about, concerns about?
I do.
Okay.
Policy 3210, parental inspection and objection to instructional materials. So.
Oh, I see it.
So what was added was this. Any request by a student's parent that the student be prohibited from borrowing certain library books will automatically be granted. The request must be made in writing to the principal and identified by title of the library book or books that the student may not borrow. For purpose of this policy, library books are defined as all instructional materials other than textbooks that are available at a school, whether in the school library or in a, or in a classroom or other space for independent use by students and school personnel outside of the standard course of study for any grade or course. The titles of all library books at a school may be accessed through a searchable web-based catalog displayed on the homepage of the school's website. So I think this is a great addition to the policies that we have here, because any parent can go and see any title of any book in any of our libraries. And I know that some people want to be able to usurp a parent's ability to handle what book their kids do or do not read. I think it's the parent's responsibility, and ultimately that family, to decide if that book is appropriate or not for them to read. And so although I appreciate a lot of people's opinions on this particular subject, I think that this policy clearly covers all parents and not just one or two people's opinions on it. Thank you.
And one thing that I found out in touring rugby the other day, that is that all the teachers are inventorying their instructional materials that they use in their classroom, and at some point, they are going to be on a searchable index. So I.
Well, and Rugby was already doing that. That was one thing that Dr. McDarris made clear, that Rugby was already doing that before, because what was it, House Bill 959, before that even came into play? Because he said, I don't want any surprises in my school. So I'm glad you brought that up.
And so parents have ample opportunity, I think. Of course, you, it's going to take some time to go through, go through these lists and see things that you, to, to look and see if you are okay with certain things or not. But I agree with Mr. Craven, we have been very transparent in what is there, and, and what, I think, I think it's only going to get more transparent when all of these lists of instructional materials in the classroom are inventoried.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I agree, there's been several occasions over the past however many years, my kids, I have a 30-year-old now, so I've been at this game for a long time, where I've gone in and requested to see stuff, you know, typically, you know, we would get the letter home. I remember when Kyle was in fifth grade, and the letter came home about they were going to be discussing, you know, health topics, they were going to separate the boys from the girls. And so I went in, and I was like, well, I want to see that stuff, and, you know, looked through it. So we've been very open with parents for a long time, and just most recently, they started doing something new at Hendersonville Middle, where they have this time on Friday mornings that they talk about, about certain things that's, you know, more of a, like a social, it's like anti-bullying, that type of thing, and they have a curriculum on it. And so when Aleah Faith started in sixth grade two years ago, I, when, you know, they had said in the email home or call home, whatever it was, you can request to, to look at that. And I went in, and there was a notebook, and I was given it, and I was able to sit in there and look through everything that was in there. Of course, I didn't find anything that was an issue. And I had many, many parents requesting like, hey, you go do it, and we don't want to be that parent, but you go do it and let us know. And of course, you know, I told them that, I didn't have a problem with it. But yeah, I, I think it's really important that now we're getting and adding on the websites, and parents can, can look through that stuff. I think it's, it's great.
Well, and I think it's, it's worth mentioning, too, for anybody who has questions about it, or hasn't, you know, might have read through the policy or the bill that came with it, that it, it does encompass not only the material they're learning in class, but it all, you know, in our libraries, but also teachers' libraries in their own classrooms. And it covers the books that they have on their shelves. Anything that's available for student, students to read, to have access to, that's what it's pertaining to. And we did get a chance to go through some of this and discuss it, too. So for anybody who had concerns or questions in regarding to what all that encompasses, anything that students have access to is what it's dealing with.
And let me just say, I do know that this list, because there's so many books in the classroom, there's so many avenues where the books come through, the list is going to constantly be updating. It's not, it's not a one and done right now, because there's so much. And I would imagine that it'll be, there'll be removal at some point and additions to come. So it's kind of like that living document that we talk about, it's constantly moving, it's ebbing and flowing. So I do like the transparency of the books, to be able to go in there and take a look at them. Again, it's, it's, you know, it may be one person's opinion, but we have, we have been able to bring in a lot of books that are very vulgar to children, and, I mean, once they see it, they can't unsee it, unfortunately. But it is a parent's right, but do they know that they have that right? So this is, this is, again, it's a living document, it is, it is solid. I feel pretty good, I feel actually really good about this policy, and I have, I have no issues with it, because it's, it's moving, it's, it's moving in the right direction.
So if it will help from an operational standpoint, systems across the state have either chosen to remove classroom libraries, which I don't like, or to inventory. And what we have selected to do is to extend our filet service, which is who we've used for our searchable database that you've had access to for years online for the media collections. We're extending it so that it's one system that's keeping up with all of it, so they can scan them in, and they can also scan them out. And that way, that searchable database is there for parents, they'll get that login to be able to search at the classroom level. They can either opt their kid into checking out zero books, and that will pop up when they go to check out a book, or it'll opt, they can opt out by specific title. So if they want to go through every title or do a search and say, I do not want my child reading that, whether they're 17 or seven, they have that option to do that. So they can do it not only, it's not all or nothing, so it can be selected by title of what they have the ability to check out.
So I, I have a technical question on that. They won't be able to get their hands on it, or they won't be allowed to check it out? Because I know in volunteering at the elementary school and the libraries, they, they don't necessarily, they'll look at books but not check them out right away, so.
It would be, it would be a checkout.
Okay.
It would be a checkout.
Pretty hard to wrangle 30 kids and be like, oh, don't look at that one.
I know, I know.
And as much as there's things that we want to see and don't want to see, it, it does make it impossible to regulate every single little thing, and we're not going 100% protect children from everything, and there's stuff that I might see that I would deem inappropriate, that Stephanie might look at and see is totally fine.
Exactly.
So it, it does make it a difficult thing, because we cannot, we can't police every single book. We can ha, I mean, age limits are there for a reason. They're in, they're for movies. We don't let our elementary school kids watch movies of certain, you know, age limits and, and ratings. So, I mean, the same can, books have ratings, too. They have a rating scale, too. So, I mean, obviously, there's going to be stuff that's not appropriate for certain age groups, and that I think our schools and our media centers are working on making sure that that's in place.
So we, we actually do have an option, if a parent finds that that is the case, is they can challenge that material. That is in a different policy. That material can be challenged, whether it's instructional material or library material. So that is already in place, too. So there is a backup fail-safe to that. If you, like, if your student comes home and talks about a book that they saw on the shelf in the library, and there is a major concern, and you review that book, and you want to challenge that material, that process and that policy is in place to do so.
I've done that, too.
Yeah, so this, so really, this boils down to parents just being active in, in, on the website and, and active in their, in their child's life, because the rating system, the mature is 13 to 18. I wouldn't want a 13-year-old knowing or reading what an 18-year-old reads. So, so they're, they're, the parent actually has to put forth the effort to be able to constantly be aware of what's going on. And that's kind of, it kind of comes back to what we had discussed a little bit ago about the, and we'll get to that in just a bit. You don't want to step over into territory. Parents do have the right, that's why this bill is in place. They have that 100% right. Yeah.
That's why I wanted to bring this up, is that it is the parent's responsibility, not someone else and their opinion of what is appropriate or not appropriate, to dictate to us what we should or should not be doing.
Well, I, I don't know if it's an opinion, or if it's just information. So I want to say thank you for the information. Otherwise, a lot of us would not know that these kind of books are in this school across the board. So thank you for the information.
I, I think it's a good system, too. I'm big on transparency, and so as a parent, I appreciate it. And I do think, I think that we're, we've about, yeah, done all that we can do. Like you said, there's no following every kid around. I would be more concerned about what their friend beside them is showing them on their cell phone.
Exactly.
I mean, so there's, you know, because you may have your kids locked down, but Jim Bob beside you doesn't, and they'll be, so we cannot shield them, I mean, from everything. And I would be way more concerned about, I mean, the phones and, you know, that, that sort of thing.
Or riding the bus back in my day. Riding the K-12 bus.
Yes, you learned a lot. You learned a lot on the back. But no, I appreciate this. I think it's good. It is always going to be, you know, the world we live in, it's, you know, it's getting more and more difficult to raise children and protect their minds and hearts. I appreciate, you know, I understand that more than anyone, as someone raising them. So I appreciate this, and just know that we value what our students are seeing as well, so.
Okay, are there any more policies that you want to point out? Anybody?
No, but I, I appreciate the discussion on them. That was one of the things that I said, we really need to discuss these out in public. So some, so everybody knows what's going on with these policies. So thank you. No, there was, there were everything else. Wow, it was good.
I make a motion to approve Policies 1 through 14 for first reading as submitted.
Any more discussion? You said for first reading, do these need to?
Are these second? These are only, okay, my bad.
These are good.
Amend that.
Yeah, I'll amend. Yeah, I'll amend it.
No more making any motions.
I'm used to doing that first reading thing, uh, I'll make a motion to approve policies one through 14 as, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion more?
Who did, did you beat me?
I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, all 14 policies carry as amended. And how do I take a little break here?
You can just call recess.
I would like to call for a five minute recess, please, and we'll come back, because we do have a couple discussion items here, we may take us some time.
They did not make that clarifying statement. So that leaves it open to, for local boards to remain with their local policies if they have that as a local policy. What it would mean effectively for us or any other district is that you could not use the FF except to delineate failing because of attendance and grades, but it doesn't purely say that you cannot withhold credit for attendance purposes. When we talk about credit, we're really just talking about nine through 12. K-8 does not do credit-based promotions, so we're talking about our high school students. So as a board, this was in the policy committee to be updated, but because of this latest action, it does not require an update because the state board did not take any action to clarify that you could no longer withhold credit for purely attendance purposes. So that's why we have moved it out as a separate discussion item for you all to consider as a board. If, one, you want to have Policy 4400 remain as it is, which the last time it was updated was June 27th of 2024, as far as when this policy came into where you added that on, I'm sure it has been several, several years because most local boards have this as an offerable policy, or you can effectively decide to change that policy. But we did not want to lump it in with the others because the premise for us to have it as a policy update is no longer there. Now, that does not mean that the State Board of Ed may not add that clarifying statement later. I know that there has been much discussion and much debate about that, that we are working on as superintendents in this region, because at our meeting on Friday, it was the consensus of the superintendents in the region for that local option to remain. So, but the superintendents in the region have opinions, the boards in the regions have the power. So that is why we're bringing it to you right now to discuss. The, one, you have a couple of options. One, you can leave your policy as is. If you leave it as is, then we have to talk about effectively how we implement that in the current semester moving forward. And there's a couple of options there. I think the first decision, though, is as a board, is do you like the policy where it is and want it to remain with Section F, which is attendance requirements for credit and promotion, because that is a local piece of this policy. That is not on the State NCSSBA 4400.
Let me make it clear. We have never changed our policy.
Correct.
And for some reason, it has gotten out there. I think some of the staff and students have the belief and the understanding that we no longer have an attendance policy in Henderson County.
Wrong.
And I think that started happening at the beginning of the year. You know, had we known that that was out there, of course, you can't get in front of social media, and I know that, but for whatever reason, we have never changed our policy as far as our attendance requirements. And yes, if you go over that five days in a semester, 10 days in a year-long course, then you will not receive credit unless you fall into one of those credit recovery kind of situations, which we do have. And those are in our policy. Those haven't changed at all either. So the big question, I guess, is, number one, unless there is a motion to change the policy, the policy stands.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Number two discussion item is, do we, do we go back and do anything any differently because there was a lot of confusion and misunderstanding that we had changed the policy? Do, you know, what do we do at this point?
So I think there's a couple of things. I don't know that there was a misunderstanding that you have changed your policy. I think the misunderstanding is what was being represented from the state level and in multiple articles that came from multiple sources, whether that's newspapers, educational websites, or whatever. So it's kind of like the, the mule's out of the barn, and how do you get it back in the barn? And so one option would be that you just maintain your policy, and what has been missed has been missed, and we have to put people back through the opportunity to make those up. Or you can defray the policy until next semester, or you can say we could pick up, one of the things that's on our side right now is you are at the mid-point of the semester. So you could also say that we would hold students harmless for the first nine weeks, and we would pick up at the second nine weeks with this clear understanding that the policy is still in place. We are prepared to move forward with either of those three options. But, you know, if, if I may give my opinion, which I don't love to do before you all discuss, I think one compromise could be that we hold the first nine weeks harmless and that we start at the second nine weeks. In a discussion with the high school principals last week, they were happy to do either of the three. They just want to make sure that everybody does the same thing for consistency.
I don't think there's an issue with the policy myself. I think the issue is the implementation and the confusion. I think, and for the, for clarification for the public, in the world of Chromebooks and Google Classroom, students, high school students can, in fact, do all of their assignments and can, in fact, make very good grades and barely be present in class. So it is very possible, and that's the issue, is that in the world we are in today, especially very smart students, can, in fact, miss all of the instruction and pass every assignment and quiz and test, and they can barely pop in and out, and that's the issue. I think it's a divine intervention that it is literally the day in between the nine weeks. We, I personally don't think we can do anything really to go back. It's unfortunate that students were kind of abusing this little window of opportunity, not all, but some high school students have taken advantage of not showing up, but I don't think it really do them any large benefit. I mean, if they've already missed well over the allotted days, you know, we're really not going to do them any favors academically. So I think it's a win for us that we're starting a brand-new nine weeks when they go back. I think we need to make it explicitly clear that we currently locally, no matter what the state says, will not be passing students that miss over the allotted days. But I think our verbiage on our policy is fine. I think it just needs to be implemented and reminded very clearly to all of those that this is the expectation, and there will be held accountable going forward. That's my opinion.
Not wait until next semester.
Well, and we know it's already happening.
Starting nine weeks Wednesday.
So, yes, let's make sure that, because the, unfortunately, some of our students and teachers are under the assumption that there is no longer an attendance policy, and it doesn't matter how many days. We already know from teachers that students are abusing the tardy policy and taking the absence because they feel there's no, no number of absences they can have. So I would agree that we start fresh on Wednesday with all of our high schools under the same clear, concise instruction of what the attendance policy actually is, and make sure that we go forward on a clear note.
So just to be clear, the update in June 27th, 2024, was typically restructuring of some sentences, like removing some words, adding some words, but it did not change the policy as it stands.
Right.
So I, I think that, again, we need to stay where we are, but I would, I would like to see a letter of our, of our, oh, I don't know what you would call it, dismay, or just nonapproval, just not approving that the state board just changed this in any way anymore from this, from me personally. I don't know how you would word that, but I think we need to address that at State Board.
So could you write a letter on our behalf to the State Board?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Yes, that is what I'm asking, yeah, yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I still don't even know how we got here.
Uh, I.
Yeah, I don't either.
I am, I feel like a couple of kids hustled some teachers, and then all of a sudden it just blew up.
Yeah.
And I feel like we're almost rewarding them for their hustle, because to me, it's a hustle. Oh, I don't have to go to school anymore.
Well, there's confusion on some of these policies.
It's not a confusion, the policy never changed.
No, but the way that some of those did come through in the beginning, it looked like there were, I mean, there was wording in some of those that made it look like there was no attendance that you could pass.
North Carolina General Statute 115C-378, which is in our policy, I mean, that's truancy. You have to go.
And that was my next question, is truancy. How does truancy fit in there?
Could we require them to do, like, attendance recovery? I mean, I'm fine, because listen, I'm not happy about people getting away with hustling either. I'm, I'm not into that.
I feel like it's a hustle. Like, I, I know a hustle when I see one, and my kids try to hustle me all the time on some, can I get an extra this or extra, no.
Well, literally, I, I asked a teacher face-to-face, I said, what is your understanding of the attendance policy? From the teacher's mouth was that these kids can miss as many days as they want and still pass as long as they do the work.
But did they look at our policy? I mean, that's what should guide their employment.
There's a hustler and a hustled.
I think what makes this make me believe, well, they may have ta, they may have done a little afterword hustling, however, there were some publications coming out.
There were, yes.
And we, and I will take ownership at this level about because of that confusion, we did not have a definitive directive for them.
So I'm okay, let's, let's, you know, we, we saw an example, somebody's missing 45 days out of the 49 days, or whatever it was, out of the first couple of months, they got an 82. Okay, congratulations, you won that nine weeks. I would like to see our policy is fully implemented, and it never wasn't implemented, but it is followed to the T. I would love for the administration to talk to the principals and have an assembly the first five minutes of school on Wednesday. This is what is the deal, and then send a letter home to the parents. If you don't feel like spending the 57 cents to send a letter home, y'all call me 800 times a day for all three kids about something. Call them, let the parents know, this is not going to happen. If they missed their days, then it's time to follow up on truancy. I don't know how that didn't, that fell through the cracks, because if you miss more in a couple of days.
They were still getting letters.
They were getting letters.
They're still getting letters.
Then there's got to be some teeth behind those letters.
Yes.
And.
Which we have a whole truancy court for. We may be a truancy court just for this.
But remember, truancy only goes into H.
It just needs to be made.
I get that, I know that.
It needs to be made explicitly clear to all of our principals and our students and our parents what the policy is. It never changed. We know something happened on a communication level, wherever it came from, this is what it is, this is the expectation, and hold students accountable.
And from this time forward.
Yes.
From this time forward.
You know, hey, if we got fanboozled, we got, we got it.
I would like to see a, an, an assembly, right? And who's our scariest administrator? Probably Shannon, right? Like, Dr. Marlowe scares all the kids and say, this is what's going to happen, right? And, and these are our rules and our requirements.
That's offended.
And we can start, we can start it over at zero, that's fine if you want to start the little, whatever, great, you started at zero, but we're not, we're not, we're not doing this.
Because I will say this, the clear intent of DPI who pushed this was that you would no longer be able to do this, but that is not what has happened. And there is some background stuff in there that we have zero control over, but there was a lack of clarity to us from the state level. There was a lack of clarity from the powers to the folks who actually vote on the policies at state level on GRAD-009. So that is why I'm saying, for my money, the best thing to do is go, first nine weeks, this is it, I will own that. You don't have to worry about your principals wanting this clarity, they want this clarity. You don't have to worry about teachers wanting this clarity. You may have to worry about kids wanting this clarity, because here it comes, kids, buckle up.
But how do we, how do we tell them?
So we will, we will work with our principals to make it very explicit, multiple ways. We will also work with Kimbrel to push this out. We always push out board notes to our staff, from board meeting notes anyway, that's something that she has innovated, which has been outstanding, but we can also use all of our powers that we have online and with phone calls, and I will ocho-dos-ocho somebody.
I love it, I love it.
Because I know I'm the greatest Spanish speaker of all time with an East Tennessee accent.
It's amazing.
But we will absolutely make this explicitly and fundamentally clear.
This shouldn't even come before us again. This is.
You're right. This is not something we necessarily created, but part of what we have to do is when we find ourselves in these situations, is let's find the clearest picture and clearest way forward. To me, this is the clearest way forward. Do I blame kids for trying to get away with stuff? I don't know how you were in high school. I'm not going to admit how I was in high school.
Right, exactly.
But kids are kids are kids. And lack of clarity breeds discontent sometimes, so that's what we're going to do.
Yes, sir. It left an opportunity for them to decide how to read that instruction.
Right. And, and, and again, I want to take ownership at this level for our teachers and our principals who are listening right there, because there was a lot of confusion, and if there's confusion, I own that.
It happened, we deal with it. No, it shouldn't fall before us, but it did, it happened, and now we're dealing with it, which is what we're supposed to do. So thank you, guys, for dealing with it.
I appreciate you taking responsibility, but State Board needs to take some responsibility.
Oh, we're gonna, we, we have, we have been communicating that as well.
Okay.
Well, and, and I think they need to, I mean, here you go, State Board, here's your example of what happens when you don't think that you need to tie somebody's grade to attendance. They're not going to come. I mean, if I could get paid on the job and not come, well, shoot, I'm going to hang out in my jammies and eat bonbons.
Well. While they may be able to do that in post-secondary, right now, that is not, I don't think right now our students are at the chronological age to make those decisions to whether they come to school, okay, in class or not.
They're still bound by law to do so.
Yeah.
One of the other things that I would address in that letter would be to get feedback.
Thank you, sir.
Well ahead of time.
Yes.
So that we don't find ourselves in these situations. One of the frustrations of my career has been when things feel like they're done to us and not done with us. So that is something that I will clarify in that letter, and I, I shared in a, in a conversation before we came into session that our RESA has requested that we do a letter as well, and RESA is our Western Region Educational Service Agency that has 18 to 19 districts, basically from McDowell County to Cherokee County and from North Carolina to South Carolina as you go, as the crow flies. So we are in agreement as a RESA superintendent group that this is something that needs to be clarified, that it remain an option.
Well, I want to, I probably shouldn't, but I am going to. I want to specifically thank Olivia Oxodine for taking my text and listening to what I had to say, and I want to say that most all of them up there will listen, it's just a matter of communication and knowing what's coming down the pike. So we do know that next month, they are going to work on a little bit more, and I agree that the communication needs to happen before that takes place. So thank you, sir.
All right, so we don't need to take any action on this policy. It has never changed, and it is where it is. We're just going to communicate.
No, but I hope you understand why we set it separate, and we also wanted to discuss it. Thank you for allowing us to do that.
Okay, next, we have Mr. Seshia, and we have to take action on a sole-source purchase.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Mine's a, a little bit, a little anticlimactic compared to the last stuff, but it is important for us nonetheless. This goes back to the whole student safety piece. So sole source for you tonight is for us to renew our contract with Securely, which is our internet filtering software service that we have. It does a lot of things, but that is primarily its, its main function, and it comes to you because even though it is only a $50,000 total contract, split between local and federal, there is a little bit of federal involved, so here we are. So we, it wouldn't have to be a bid, but we are using it for the, it's highly technical, and it is continuity of service that we have had Securely in place as our filter for a while now, and it went to our committee as is presented there in the documentation that we approved that Securely would be a sole source, and the company did provide their letter that they are a sole source for this very specific software filter.
It's great to know how much this went up from last year.
It is, it is the same price.
Same price?
Yeah.
Well, and for those that don't fully know, it's something that I learned with this that literally, because our students communicate with each other through their Chromebooks. They send emails to each other all the time when they're in class. Most of this, they don't have internet access at some of their schools, but they can still email each other, and they do, especially in our middle schools. And they also use it as a form of, a way to bully each other and send hateful stuff to each other, but this software is catching every bit of that. And something, I didn't, I didn't fully understand all this till I asked some questions about it, but every single time something is sent between our students that has certain letters, certain wording, certain phrases, it's, it's flagging all of that. And when we were in our meeting with Dr. McDarris, we, he was sitting there discussing that with us, and he said, I've actually got several right now sitting in my inbox of flags, and it's even flagging of teachers. Sometimes if they're discussing something or whatever, and it'll, it'll even flag that, and he'll get messages about that. So I appreciate that we have this in place, because this is an extra form of protection to catch all sorts of things, and so thank you, guys, for being on top of it, and for those that are constantly monitoring those, you have a very, very intense job, so thank you.
Move that, Henderson County Board of Public Education approved the non-competitive procurement waiver as presented.
Second.
More discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Motion carries.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Bernie.
And now, Mr. Garrett, low-performing schools.
So as part of the statutory requirements for your schools that are designated low-performing, the state has us take care of a few things in the October meeting. I gave you a preview of this in September, but this is the actual formal piece that we need your approval so that we can take care of a couple of those state requirement deadlines. So low-performing schools requirements, very simply, are right here, that talks about how they are defined. They receive a D or F and a growth score of met or not met. One of the requirements is to develop a school or district plan for improvement. Dr. Marlowe is going to cover those in the subset under this agenda item in subset number one in just a moment. All plans are located in NCSTAR. Again, another thing that the public has access to is they can get online and go to all of our schools and look at their school improvement plans. They will receive a login, where they can get in and see the public facing the difference in the school improvement plans of today versus what they were for many years, is they are living documents, so they are updated monthly by our schools as they work as school improvement teams. Back in the day, your school improvement plan was done one time a year, and then it went on a shelf, and hopefully you looked at it every now and then, but not guaranteed. Also, a requirement of a school has been identified as low-performing as provided in this section, and the school is not located in a local school at Mireshave Unit, identified as low-performing, the following actions shall be taken. What does that mean? That means that we are not a low-performing district, we are a district that has low, some schools identified as low-performing. So step one, this is what we're doing. Within 30 days of the initial identification, I recommend to the local board of education one of four things. One, the local board, the principal be retained in the current position. We recommend that the principal be retained in the current position, and a plan of remediation be developed. We recommend to the local board the principal be transferred or, under GS 115C-325-4, to dismiss or demote the principal. After that, step two, within 30 days, we shall submit to the local board of education a preliminary plan for improving both the school performance grade and school growth score, including how the superintendent and other administrators will work with the school and monitor the school's progress, and that is where Dr. Marlowe and her team come in. Then we have to do parent notifications, so letters will go out to parents of each of the schools that are identified as low-performing that include all of these requirements. Step three, within that same 30 days of getting the preliminary plan, the local board shall vote to approve, modify, or reject the plan. Before the local board votes on the preliminary plan, it shall make the plan available to the public. So Dr. Marlowe will cover those plans today, they will sit for review, and you will act on those plans in November. So there's a three-step process. September is when you get the initial information, October is when we come in and talk about the school leadership and what those school improvement plans look like, and then November will be when you approve those plans or reject those plans or approve them with some modifications. Then we submit the final plan to the board within five days of your approval, and that is a format that we have that goes directly to the state, and Dr. Marlowe submits that the day after your action in November. So submitting the plan, all of them will be submitted through NCSTAR access once again, which again makes sure that it is done correctly and also that public access is there. These are our schools designated as low-performing. There are five of them there. Dana Elementary School, not met, F-ing not met, Enneville Elementary, D and not met, Flat Rock Middle, D and not met, Hillendale Elementary, D and met, and Upper Elementary, D and met. So it is my recommendation that we do option one, we retain those principals. We already work on a professional development plan with them anyway, and a growth plan anyway, so we are, my recommendation is to retain those principals in those positions. As you look down the line there, they are newer to those spots, and when you look at the bottom two schools, they're making steady progress as toward their school grade, and then that is my recommendation.
Why would you recommend one versus two if you're already going to be putting together a growth plan?
So two is a little bit more serious when you look at their personnel records, and if they, if, if they're ever in another position and ask were they on a directed plan, they would have to say yes, so it changes some things when it comes to their future employment potentially.
So where is that line for you, where you would recommend number two over number one?
Multiple years, multiple years, and looking and trending in the wrong direction. Most of the time, I would make the change anyway without it getting to this point. So if we were looking at a change, I would, Mr. Craven, I would have done that in the summer, looking at those preliminary numbers.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about a change, but I'm talking about, you know, if you put them on a remediation to, a plan of remediation, so you're saying really there's, there's not a time that that would happen under your tenure, either it'd be number one, or you'd already have got rid of that principal?
Um, I wouldn't say never. I think there could be some situations where you look at, somebody has been there for multiple years and had a couple of rough years in a row, and maybe in their professional development plan had not heated some of the things or met some of those goals that we had set together, that would be a little bit more directive, or, well, just plain simple, a lot more directive. So right now, when we look across those schools, and we, we've met with them multiple times, both as IST has met with them and I've met with those principals individually as well, or we have as a leadership team, looking at their plan and their development for moving forward makes a lot of sense, is very logical in the way that they're building and developing, and if they're hitting those marks of what they say they're going to do, then we would keep them on that number one. If they're not, then that's a much different conversation and a much more directive conversation.
I know we don't want any low-performing schools, and I, I'm going to talk out both sides of my mouth here. You walk in any of our schools, and I don't think you can, you can say, oh, that's a low-performing school based on, on what you see and what, what those teachers are doing. But an F really bothers me. I think that's the first F I've had since I've been here for nine years. And it's not a small drop in those numbers, it was a pretty, pretty big drop to, to receive that F. I know we have a fairly new principal in that role.
And they didn't mean growth.
And, and they didn't mean growth, right. That bothers me.
How often is that rating system changing for those, for these, for our schools?
The rating system, the rating system has not changed in many years.
No, I just mean like their grades, how?
It's every year, every year at this time. So.
Okay.
The way your accountability system works is they go through the testing in the spring, we get the raw preliminary numbers, then we get the firm numbers on the proficiency side, that's 80% of your school grade. Then it takes a while for us to get the EVOs data, which is the value-added assessment that's the other 20% of that grade. So one of the tough parts about this as a board and as a leadership team is we're sitting here in October, we've just really received those growth numbers a month previous and less than a month previous, and we still don't have the teacher growth data, the teacher The teacher growth data does not come out until November. So it takes most of the first semester to really get all of the picture of why the number is where the number is and to start working. That's why we start working on those raw data improvement things in the, in the summer. And I want to follow up on your statement, Mr. Craven. We should never have an F, ever.
This is the first time we've had one in?
Since I've been here.
Well, and can I?
I don't know ever, but probably ever. It is very rare in the western part of the state to have that. Now, I think you can look at some changes and some of those things that happen that can be contributing factors, but at the end of the day, that's an excuse. And we don't, we don't live on excuses. There's some academic standards that we know are, need to be addressed in, in all of these schools and of all of our schools, period. But when we talk about the ones on these lists, absolutely. I also agree, Mr. Craven, that if anybody wants to walk through these schools, I'm happy to walk them through and let them see what's happening there.
That's the thing that, that hurts, and I hate that it's, you know, 80% is one test on one day depending on how that kid's doing or what's going on, if they had breakfast or whatever happened in their life. Um, there's a lot of pressure on that one test. I, I, I know that we had tests, we think we took the California Achievement Test or something?
Yeah, the CAT.
Whatever, right? But I don't remember there being as much pressure on it.
Your school was not rated?
I, I, I just don't remember the pressure that, that these kids, and even I think this past week my kids had the check-ins, right? And they're stressing. Um, and I'm like, listen, calm down. Yeah, everything, everything's fine. Everything's good. It's whatever. But when you see the numbers drop as much as they did at Dana, and you're not talking about a two, three, four percent, I, I, what's the number? It's in the high teens, right, that they dropped from last year?
So they've dropped about 20 points over the past?
Twenty points.
How many of those kids were affected by Hurricane Helene?
And that's the next thing, right?
We had a huge event, and it did affect that area very, very bad. We saw, I mean, the school our kids go to, not only a C school. They had to pick up their whole school and move them. I don't like excuses either, but we're talking about a thousand-year storm that came through here. That's, that's a pretty big excuse. And I like the fact that we have the, you know, we would look at this, this principal. You know, I've seen her grow from just a, a teacher up. She is the best person to be at that school right now. I'm super excited about that power team in between, you know, the AP and her. And she's going to take this personal. You won't see that score again, and that's, that's what I love about it. Because like you say, you're going to go in this school and see the love that she pits with those kids. My goodness. But we did have a pretty big excuse.
And we had a choice whether to, we, we could have taken the waiver, right? On the school grades this year?
We did a few of the days, but we also made up some of those days.
We didn't have a, we didn't have a choice of whether we didn't stay.
We, no. Did we not have a?
High schools did first semester, they just?
First semester, okay, okay.
So how much of the data that controls this? Is this all data that comes directly from the state that we're required to put in here? Or is there, I guess what I'm trying to say is how much control do we have as far as what we're looking at to grade these schools on a local level versus a state level?
None.
Okay.
So can I request that next month that we have our schools, like a document with our schools listed and their grades, like met growth, exceeded growth, not met growth, and then their subsets. LEP, poverty, their EC population. Because I think those demographics of, I know, not just I think, it contributes to their grades. And I really would love to see that document. I just was not in the country to, to request that.
Well, and can we, when we do that, can we have those numbers from their last grade and what that's looked like, like the actual percentage and how it's changed to this one?
We've got every conceivable data point that you want.
Okay.
I think that would be, that's really, all of that contributes majorly to a school. And it's, it's not as simple black and white. That's why I'm not a fan of the way they do these, especially the fact that the growth is so minimal. You know, to me, it's all about growth, and you really can't compel, compare apples to oranges.
Well, and not putting everybody on the same state level.
They're, I mean, there's a lot of contributing things that are not taken into consideration. So my heart hurts for Dana because I, I mean, an F is hard. That's a hard hit. Nobody wants to see that. But, you know, I just want to make it clear that, you know, we're not sitting here, I just don't want them to have this pressure of, you know, the fact that like everyone's mad at us and, you know, that whole thing. Because I mean, obviously, we're not happy about it, of course, like because we know our potential, right? Like we see our teachers, our staff, our students, like we know what we have. And so we know that we are capable of excellence. I mean, obviously, that's what we strive for. But, you know, I just want to be careful that, yes, we need to obviously have a plan. We need to move forward. We need some goals. But I just want to also know that, you know, to have this school and all of them on the list, but specifically Dana, that, you know, we still see you. And maybe, you know, we just need to like pivot and do something different because they're a different population, right? Like you can't, everything can't be the same, and it's not. And but, you know, the fact that we still love them and we're here, we're, we're doing it together. It's like a teamwork thing, and I just, it hurts my heart. I don't, I don't want any of them to take it personally. You know, that's hard.
They are going to. How would you not? I mean, if we gave you an F rating, wouldn't you take that personally?
So I went out and met with the faculty because I knew this was a big blow. And what I shared with them was that we have all the confidence in the world that they're going to grow and they're going to continue. They laid some very, very good groundwork last year that isn't reflected in their data, but will build to that future data that they are going to have. We also talked about, you know, their process that they've already been working on. They didn't just start looking at this when they got their grade. They started immediately when they got their raw numbers. Whether that's talking about some curricular items, some teaming items they were doing, some grade level changes, or some shifts that they were doing internally to try to put the best team in the best positions to move the kids forward. The other thing that I shared, and I share this with all of our schools, is I always want the number to reflect the quality that I see when I walk through that school. This is what that is. It is not a reflection of the quality of Dana. What it is, though, is a reflection of what their score is. And we need to support them to make sure that that score is increased. You know, all of our schools, we have 13 elementary schools. All of them very different demographically, all of them very different culturally, all of them very different in a lot of aspects. So when you talk about an apples-to-apples comparison, that's very, very tough. But at the end of the day, this is the game that we have to play, and this is the measurement that we have as a district. So we want to put our best foot forward. We are continuing to meet and support all of these schools and really all of our schools. Our other schools who are not on this list, who didn't quite meet growth, we're going through these same processes because we want to emphasize that student growth, knowing that that's what's going to lead to those better outcomes.
Can I ask one more question? When are school improvement plans due in? Do you guys have those?
That's what's coming up next.
Okay, because I just was wanting to ask if we could get them maybe like two weeks before the board meeting, if you have them by then? Okay, perfect.
So tonight, you'll see these five, and you'll have a chance to look at them before you vote on them next month. But that's where that next 30 days comes in. So initial notification today, initial recommendation for those principals today. Dr. Marlowe will cover the preliminary improvement plans here in just a moment. And then we will come back to you in November for the overall approval and then submission to the Department of Public Instruction. So the only action I would need today is on my recommendation that those principals remain in those positions for the remainder of the 25, 26 school year.
Can I ask one question before we start? Dana, Flat Rock, I'm trying to think the others, but in the last five years, what's been the, the turnover on principals and interims? Because when you have a lot of change in leadership, unfortunately, that, that brings some uncertainty. And I think that plays a role. I think you've put some really good people in place right now that are stable, and they're really going to do a lot of good stuff. So I mean, something like that's got to be looked at, but not everybody knows. But that is, that is a thing.
So Dana just finished first year. Edneyville just finished third year. Flat Rock just finished second year. Hillandale was in place when I got here, so at least four years, and then upward.
That's new.
He's, never been?
Three years, maybe?
We've all been in, we've all been in leadership.
I did not place Hillandale or upward. But they were just placed probably right before I got here.
But we've all been in leadership roles. It, it takes some time to get buy-in and stuff like that, and you've got some really good people in place.
And?
I mean, you did have, you know, with Dana, she came in and that first year, that hit was something that?
None of us have ever dealt with. And that was, and they were hit hard in that area, very hard. And that took time to come back from, and that took time to, and these students are still feeling the weight of that. They're still trying to pick it up. And that was at the start of her first year there. So that does play a factor, and that's something that you have to, whether the state looks at it that way or not, it's stuff that we do have to take into consideration. So I, I, along with Amy, would love to see that information laid out so that we can see that broken down.
And when you look at, when you look at it over time, Hillandale and Upper both improved their overall school grade. Upper exceeded growth last year, two years ago, and met growth this year. Edneyville has improved their school grade and had a little bit of dip this year, so they've spent two years bringing their school grade up. Flat Rock Middle exceeded growth last year, did not meet growth this year. So there are some things in there where this is not all doom and gloom at all, and I don't want anybody to, to, to think that. This is the process that we have to go to based on the state requirements. Before I leave this district, you will not have any of those. We will have zero. That, that is, that is a goal.
Reflects leadership.
So I will take a motion from the superintendent's recommendation that we leave the principals in place at those schools. Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise?
All right, thank you. That'll let me fill out that piece for the state, and then we'll let Dr. Marlowe come up and talk about the improvement plans.
So just to follow up, school improvement plans for all the schools are actually due on Halloween. And so once I have those, they just have to finalize it in NC STAR. I'll pull those down as PDFs and do exactly what I did this time. I'll give you those PDFs. And then you can either look at them that way, or you can go into NC STAR and look at them.
Okay.
That should, I think the next board meeting is the 10th. So it's not quite two weeks, but it's pretty close.
Yeah, but that's better than just the week. Yeah, because these will be done. I'm just worried about the, all the other schools.
Correct. And they are currently working on them. So we had initially asked them all to redo the 31st, and then once we got the list of schools that were designated as low performing, we had them work with our instructional services team liaisons to kind of move that process ahead for them a little bit so we could get these to you faster. The purpose in doing that is that since you have these five already, we can post tomorrow the link for the community feedback. So those will go up on websites tomorrow, on our Henderson County website and on each of those schools' websites. They'll get feedback over the next 30 days, and then we can bring them all back to you for your approval. So, and basically, that's how that process works for schools that are designated as low performing. I will say, part of what we've been already working on is meeting monthly and touching base with those principals. We've also, we are increasing the number of instructional rounds. So my team goes on rounds and then provides feedback to teachers and administrators during that time. We actually email those teachers and tell them what we saw that was amazing and what wonders we might have. So for these schools, we will be doing that monthly. And you were talking about Dana, we were there last week and saw some phenomenal stuff, like really engaged kids. And that right there is part one, is getting your kids involved in the learning. So tomorrow, those links go up for these plans that you have in place. Really, there's no action other than review and any comments that you had about these. And then we will get those up tomorrow for community feedback.
And if we have any feedback we need to give it, how do we do that?
You can either use the link that will be on their website, or you are more than welcome to just email me, and I will pass that along directly to the principal and the liaison. Those, just keep in mind that what you see on the website, if you go in through NC STAR, there could be some tweaks already from even the PDF that I sent you because they are, again, live documents. The goals should be set, but they might add some additional action steps or reword an action step as they have school improvement team meetings and decide that they need a little more work toward getting to that goal. So yes.
So no action tonight, just access?
Mm-hmm.
And our time to look through them and provide any feedback? Back to Dr. Marlowe.
Yes.
As well as the public.
As well as the public, yes, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Okay, thanks. Mr. Garrett, school bus garage. New school bus garage.
New, new school bus garage. Yes, I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on where we are with that process. I think the last that we informed you was the RFQ was out. The county had released an RFQ for an architect to work on and design a new transportation facility for our school bus garage. We sat down as a group, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Dillon and myself were the ACPS representatives, along with some representatives from the county. And there were six submissions. And looking on the agenda for the Board of Commissioners, they have that for action. And the recommended group, when we did all of the scoring, was LS 3P. So the Board of Commissioners have that for action on their Wednesday agenda. If LS 3P is the approved selection, then we will begin working with them on the design process. So just kind of wanted to let you know that that is still moving forward.
Can we request another joint facilities meeting with them too? Like maybe right after the holidays or? And then I, we also need to, Mr. Bridges was on that committee. We need to replace his seat on that. And I would like to see Stephanie, Ms. Cantwell, take his place if possible.
So if I can contact Mr. Mitchell via email after the meeting and let him know about a request for a joint facility committee meeting, I'll be glad to do that.
I think, I think we should hold off until after their meeting on Wednesday to see what is said about the bus garage, honestly. Because everything else that we have to talk about, we don't know yet because we just pushed off the architect. And I think what really needs to happen, the big thing that's going to happen is pricing for east on what we want to do, what that looks like. And I don't know if that's getting the cart before the horse. Now, listen, if something goes awry with this bus garage thing, we're going to have to meet. But if everything, I think, goes good with that, we don't have any projects. We've got Berkeley, that's well on its way to being completed, but that's not even our project. You know, bus garage, west is completed. We don't really have any big things that are standing out there. So I think we should wait until we get some pricing on what we want to do at north, Apple Valley, east. Pricing out the windows for Apple, Atkinson, if that's what we want to look at.
Unless there's a hitch.
Unless there's a hitch.
I was thinking like after the holidays.
Okay, yeah, as soon as we can get that. I do have one question on there about the Atkinson Phase Two and Phase Three, the, of the HVAC work. Do we know where we're at there? Okay. Okay, but I'm, I'm happy to meet with them.
Carl will be up in a minute with the capital, and you can get him in.
I think it'd be great if we could come in there, Mrs. Holt, with some pricing on, hey, this is, this is the next thing we need you guys to look for.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if something happens Wednesday, they're like, oh, bus garage this, or we're not going to, whatever, then I think absolutely we go meet, but.
I would like to go ahead, and Stephanie, would you agree to be on that committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then appoint, and if she accepts that's appointment, then it takes a board vote to do that. So I make a motion that Stephanie be appointed to our ad hoc joint facilities committee meeting, committee team. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Okay, thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Stephanie.
All right. Now, Mr. Taylor.
Okay, should I ask now?
You can ask now.
Thank you, sir.
Let him talk first, just a minute. Let him talk first, just a minute.
All right, so, uh, for this month's capital update, uh, as always, I'll start with, uh, the interim projects that are managed by our facilities and maintenance team. And so the card access installation that began over the summer is now completed. That was where, again, uh, it, we made sure that all of our campuses had card access readers at their front, uh, entries. Uh, and so that was completed, uh, in the last few weeks. The second one that is ongoing is the sinkhole at Hendersonville Middle School in terms of the softball field. And the reason that there is a sinkhole there is because of this compromised pipe that runs underneath the field. Uh, so you can see the cracks in that pipe, and so the water that has leaked out there has resulted in that sinkhole.
What is that pipe for?
Stormwater.
It's a stormwater pipe.
Yes, so it captures, yep, captures stormwater off the, the main road there and.
Send it to the creek, I guess?
Send it to the creek. Yeah. So we are looking at a couple of different options. One option we're exploring is digging up the field, pulling that pipe out and replacing it. The second one is, uh, a company called New Pipe has an insert that goes in. Uh, once it is heated, uh, or steamed, it then expands out, and then it'll repl, it would then effectively replace that pipe. That pipe would no longer be of any use.
Now, it's already dug up.
Just the, the whole part is, um, not the entire, uh.
Not going from the creek to the road.
That run, that runs about 140 feet, uh, so that's what all would have to be dug up if we end up going the route of replacing it.
And it's several feet deep, too.
Do.
Do you have cost estimates?
Yeah, do we have?
It's about 20. We're working on getting those final numbers so that we can compare the two. Yes.
Did they give you ballpark, like, are we talking 500,000?
Oh, no.
No.
Yeah, I, I think, um, we're looking anywhere probably in the, the 70,000 to 90,000 range, somewhere in that ballpark.
What about the girls' softball team, middle school softball, where are they going to practice and play?
Our goal is to have it back up and running by the time the season rolls around.
Okay.
That, that is our goal still.
This, this product that we found is really pretty fascinating.
Pretty cool.
Because you blow it in, you blow it through, and then you steam it, and it, and it fills the void.
What kind of warranty does it have on?
50-year.
Hey.
Yeah, so a five, five, I believe. I believe it's five-year in terms of a complete, you know, labor replacement, everything, uh, but then the product itself is 50.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's neat.
Yeah, so, uh, we'll keep you updated on that one. In terms of MRTS. Uh, again, as Mr. Garrett has already shared with you, in terms of the new bus garage, uh, the selection committee did meet September 26th, and so we'll see how Wednesday's commissioners meeting goes on that front. Uh, the HVAC controls replacement, that is in progress, uh, at Sugarloaf, our middle schools, north and west. Uh, we did all of the other elementary schools, or finished that up a little over a year ago. Uh, paving, uh, Hendersonville Elementary School was the main part of our paving project this year. Uh, and so, uh, I've got a couple of pictures here that'll show that main circle and parking lot after it was done. Uh, Flat Rock, Fletcher, and Marlowe, those minor repairs are complete at this time. Hillandale Mills River had some minor repairs taken care of, and now we're just waiting to get the ceiling and restriping done there. Uh, for the roofing, uh, West Henderson actually is complete. East Henderson is very close to being completed, um, there. And that, the roofing projects are actually from last year's MRTS, and we've already been able to begin this year's, uh, in getting Flat Rock on the list. So that one's going to be the next one to begin. Here's a couple of pictures from Hendersonville Elementary. If you've been in that parking lot recently, you know how, what just bad shape it was in. Uh, and so that was a much-needed improvement there at that school. Then West, here's a couple of pictures from West Henderson in terms of the roofing project. Again, that was while it was being done, but it is all complete now.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
And so in terms of questions, to answer Mr. Craven's question about Atkinson, right now, uh, that pro, the Atkinson phase two and three, uh, have not gone out yet in terms of the bit of the work. The engineering, I believe, is all complete at this time.
And the money's allocated, right?
That, so phase two is from last school year.
Yeah.
And phase three is this school year's MRTS. And so the plan was to wait and combine them in hopes that we can get better pricing since it's all one part now.
So we're, Brian and his team are running the RFP process on that, right?
Yes.
So I know they've got their hands full, and maybe this isn't something that's on their radar. Is this something that we could potentially pull on our side, since we have the resources to be able to handle a project like that and get this thing moving? Because you've got one hallway that's conditioned. The money's been allocated.
If given the opportunity, we can manage that, yes.
I would love for you guys to potentially send a message to, to the county manager and see if we can take that on, since the money's been allocated, it's needed, um, we've conditioned one side and not the other two. Uh, that'd be awesome to get this thing moving. They've got their hands full with the J car. We can handle some HVAC.
Mr. Dillon will be glad to run with it.
We will make that contact.
Thank you.
Did, um, have we looked at the sidewalk there at Rugby? Has anybody been out there to look at the sidewalk to where it's all falling apart? And also, have you had any updates on their bridge?
So in terms of the sidewalk, uh, there out front, there's just some areas where the sidewalk has become compromised. And Mr. Dillon is aware of that and went out there a few weeks ago to look at it. Uh, I'll need to get an update from him, where we're at in getting that repaired. Um, in terms of the bridge, the bridge, of course, uh, was lost during the, the hurricane a year ago. And so, um, funding is the, the part that, uh, Mr. Socia is working through in terms of insurance FEMA. Uh, just, uh, identify, uh, the funding that is available and the type of bridge that we can replace it with.
Mine's kind of a different topic, but I have noticed I show up early in the mornings at some schools where we're doing some work and construction, and ladders are being left there, um, for access potentially over the weekend and whatnot. Can we just make sure we, we talk to them about the safety and security of that and make sure we bring those stuff down?
Most definitely.
No surprises, I don't like surprises.
Amen to that.
Thank you.
Any things?
More questions? Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
You're very welcome.
And now, Mr. Socia.
Okay. Two reports this evening, um, local current expense and other restricted funds through September. Our revenues, um, 11,276,000, and expenditures are at 8,295,000. Always a time of year when we're way ahead on the revenue side, um, the way we're getting our money. Compared to last year, we're $145,000 higher in expenditures, as, as to be expected. The main part of that now was just we had an increase in insurance premiums this year. It was not a shocker there. We did include that in our budget requests to the county, and that was funded, so that is all covered. Um, the other report is for capital outlay through September 30th. Our revenues are 950,000, and our expenditures are at 906,000, in addition to what Mr. Taylor had shown. The other two big projects that were paid for in this timeframe were the bleachers at east, the other Hurricane Helene, um, situation that was out there. Um, that was $351,000 of this year's dollars to get spent, and we purchased the maintenance truck and the activity bus, which was a whopping 237,000. And I will, um, the other piece to the, the bridge out there, we have, we're waiting to hear back from the state. We have applied for more Helene capital dollars so that we can try to make a better bridge out there at Rugby, which would allow emergency, um.
And it is a safety aspect for the students, too, because currently to get there, they're having to cut through around that little tiny little strip of grass, um, during car rider, and so you have students in cars, and it's just not a, it's not a safe situation.
Yeah, so we continue to work with FEMA insurance and now the state on that one. But hopefully, we are in the very short timeframe, and we'll have something to go out to bid on that one soon.
There's a question.
Yes.
I just don't remember.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna ta, ask about line item 4,400 under revenues for capital outlay, out, outlay. The Windsor Autry donations.
Uh-huh.
That seems low.
So we get $250 every time there is a purchase of a house in there. That money then comes to us, so all that we've received this year has been the sale of one.
Because those houses come, they go up and.
House sold where?
In Riverstone.
In Riverstone.
Those houses.
So you're telling me only one house is sold?
This year. I think.
That is what, that is what they have told us. But I will be glad to reach out again and verify that.
Keeping track of, of that. You don't need one more thing, I know, Mr. Socia.
No, I will, I will, I will reach out to them tomorrow.
But, uh, that can't be.
There, there's gotta be like some, like, we need to ask a realtor, like, how do we find this information out that's?
We can get that from the county.
You can find that out in a second.
Get that from the deed office.
Okay.
That's a perpetual moneymaker that I don't think we're getting our cut on.
They're hustling us.
Was that?
They're hustling us, $250.
I will search for Paul Newman, and I will see if he's, uh, put one over on us.
Yeah, one house? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, now, like I said, if we need to, we can go through the register deeds, property transfers, and see.
I, I hate to put anything else on you.
No, it's, that's.
I hate. It, it wouldn't take but two or three times, and they'd start doing it.
Yep, it comes through the, the property owner there, so.
What do you mean?
HOA.
You have to cut a check through, the HOA cuts a check?
No, it probably is at closing.
It's the, um, I'm just drawing a blank on the name of the, the company that manages all the.
Title?
Yeah, the properties out there.
Oh.
Well, it's through Windsor Autry, actually.
So they get money from the seller at closing that should cover that cost.
250.
That's supposed to go into escrow at some point. And then that escrow balance is supposed to be released to us.
Yes.
Yeah, why don't we do a little bit more homework on that?
Yeah.
Let's make sure that, that number's, that number's, uh, it feels like some escrow money might be coming our way.
Well, we can always search public records and count.
Yeah, absolutely, might pay for a bridge.
I'm telling you, those houses go up for sale.
All the time.
They, they are snapped up just like that.
It is in the correct district.
It is in the correct district.
It is.
That'd be great.
Thank you for all your work, and I don't mean to add any more to you.
Mr. Socia, speaking of adding more to you, while you're up there, would you give our board a quick update on state budget and federal budget, especially with the federal shutdown right now of what our status is?
Sorry, it, it's, so, one of those, um, well, federal and state budgets certainly are, um, absent. And they cannot get a forced fail, even though they're absent, so there you go, we got that. We are budgeted on the state side. We are still, we are good on our budget relative to what's happening at the, with the state. We have planned accordingly on that one. The federal budget, our federal grant programs have been allocated for our current fiscal year. So those dollars are already in the works, they are clear to come to us. The one that is in flux in this conversation is going to be child nutrition, because that's USDA reimbursement money. That's not money that's allocated to us for the year, it's money that we request in reimbursement. They have three months' worth of funding. That should get us just about to the end of the calendar year. We have, and with our fund balance, we will get into January if there was no more funding. So that is going to be our timeframe of when we need the federal government to be up and running, or something specific has to happen to the USDA and the funding. Certainly going to be on, the spotlight is going to get on that as this time gets closer and closer for child nutrition programs across the whole country. So, but that is where we are on that, is that we have enough, we will get us through into January.
Can I ask a question? Um, have you seen a decrease this school year in free and reduced lunch, um, ability for, uh, children to acquire that? Or does it seem, does a level seem to be comparable to last year?
I will have to look into that one a little bit more. Based on the numbers that we're seeing in participation, I would say things are going well. Both paid and free participation seems to be maintaining, if not actually increased in several cases. So I would think that it's going okay, but.
Okay.
I would, I would really want to find out what those numbers are coming in.
Okay, because I had read something online that the benefits for that had been cut, and I thought that that was, I, I said that was false, but I want to find out if I'm wrong. So, just curious.
As far as like, federal cut or local?
Yeah, no, federal, like, that, that, there, there's not near as many children being approved for free and reduced, that that budget for that has been cut, and I.
Yeah, no, yeah, the criteria for that has not changed.
Okay, all right, just making sure.
As far as the current year, nothing.
Okay.
Uh, it is also our intent for the board, um, to bring you a comprehensive school nutrition update in the next, uh, meeting, simply because we'll have a better feel on our numbers, the reimbursements, all of those will come back. So I know that is something that you all valued last year and wanted a little bit more frequently, so that is something you can look for in your November, uh, agenda.
Are we going to try to have a presentation by November from a representative from Eat Real?
So, uh, the latest I got from Eat Real is what I shared out with you via email. So, um, if you, uh, have any questions or any other pieces that you want to know after watching that video that Ms. June sent us, then we will reconnect. I don't know if there was a way that we could have her Zoom in or something of that nature, but, um, everything that you've requested me, that I've asked of her, that is what has been sent.
I don't even know what they do, besides come in and tell you how to spend money better. I, I'm confused by what you.
Well, and there, and Sheila can provide some more information on this, but there was some discussion with them about being able to come down to Marietta, Georgia, and see their process and ask questions and get some more hands-on, one-on-one with that. So I'll check with Sheila on that one.
Well, if we could do a Zoom, if she could give us, I, I mean.
I don't need to go to Atlanta.
What, what I would say is this, the, the introduction she did was great. She's very knowledgeable, very articulate, but I want to hear some nuts and bolts. I want to hear what it's about, some nuts and bolts. If she could Zoom with us and do a presentation, I'm good with that, but.
And we have requested those things, um, so we will, we'll try to line up a Zoom opportunity.
Because I want, I want to know the details at this point.
So do I.
Okay. Anything else?
All right, I, I will point out, we did get our USDA reimbursement today.
Oh, that's good.
For last month, and it was a he, very healthy, it was $700,000 reimbursement from USDA, which is, is as good as we would have expected, actually better than we expected to get, so.
That's awesome.
That is, now we'll do all the digging into the data to figure out where everything is going on the expense side.
And along that same line, and we'll do more next month, um, some second chance breakfasts and some innovative breakfast practices are having a big impact on participation at our middle and high schools. Which is, and also, uh, refocusing the breakfast in the classroom programs in our elementary schools has yielded a pretty large increase in the participation there as well. So, a, a lot of action taking place to try to get that participation up.
Who came up with the little protein shakes? I saw that advertised here recently, which are, uh, PIO. Shout out to the PIO and everything going out.
The Moo Brew?
The Moo Brew.
Moo Brew, that's awesome.
So, uh, that came, that's, uh, one of the vendors, and knows meet all of the federal requirements that we have to on the nutritional piece. So instead of buying your $7 coffee on your way to school, buy your $2 coffee at school.
Absolutely.
Or it's free if you purchase breakfast. So, um, we don't have to be great at math to know that that's a much better value. And you don't even have to stand in line or sit in line, so.
Is it free for students that have free and reduced breakfast?
If they do a reimbursable meal, yes, if they take a breakfast, yes. So, uh.
You heard that, didn't you?
I heard it.
So, um, the grant process, the grant process provided it for those three, and we're looking at the opportunity to maybe add the fourth. Well, all of them, but the, the three schools that have it or are starting it currently came off of a grant opportunity. came off of a grant opportunity. So it wasn't that we chose, it was application-based in some grant opportunities. And I'm sure all of those measurements go into that. Not sure. I think the grant was to get the equipment, so we can sustain, once we've added the equipment, to add that product. Yes. Yes, yeah.
Okay. I miss Mr. Garrett, it's up to you here.
All right, always my pleasure to share the report. So summary of the report, federal shutdown update, I just had Mr. Sosha do that. Dollar General literacy initiative donation, we were surprised last month, a couple of weeks ago, I was attending a rededication of the basketball courts in the, what's the actual name of the park?
Green Meadows Sullivan Park.
Sullivan Park, Sullivan Park in the Green Meadows neighborhood, and was showing up there to support that rededication and also to support the education foundation, because I knew they were getting a $25,000 donation from Icy Hot. And while attending, they announced that Dollar General was donating $25,000 to Henderson County Public Schools to support our literacy initiative. So those are big celebrations there. October, National School Principal Month, we certainly love and appreciate all of our principals and glad to celebrate not just Dr. Davis as our principal of the year, but all 22 of our principals who do a fabulous job. And it's also National Physical Therapy Month. This is National School Lunch Week, so again, get out there and enjoy those school meals. Today is an optional workday, no school for kids, traditional and early college are on their regular calendar. I'm sorry, trystler, the college are out, flex schools are on their regular calendar. Tomorrow is a District Professional Development Day, so no school for students on traditional and early college calendar, flex calendar will continue. You heard about NC Countdown to College Application Week? That's the 20th through the 26th. October 31st, on Friday, it is Treat Street. Last year was our first time participating in Treat Street as an organization here, so we went out front and handed out candy, and it was quite a lot of fun, so we're going to do that again on Fourth Avenue out here in the front from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. I have purchased a 20-foot skeleton. Last year I had a little scarecrow out there, and I'm like, I got to outdo that. My wife was making fun of me for purchasing that, that is a personal purchase that I like to bring in. It is currently on my deck, blown up, if you want to drive by my house and see it. It is tacky and awesome at the same time. But more importantly, Tawana found a school bus inflatable Halloween thing that we will put out front as well. So come out and celebrate with us. If you want to, if you want to come by and help give out candy, we have a sign-up sheet and we have some spots available. November is National Native American Heritage Month and NC Veterans History Appreciation Month. November 3rd through the 7th is National School Psychology Week. We have our board tours on the 5th, and that will be to Dana, Hendersonville, Hendersonville Middle and upward. November 7th, Class of 2026 Senior T-shirt distribution, so we are making up for those seniors who did not get their kindergarten T-shirt for a few years, and we're about caught up. Do we have one more round, Kimbrel? One more cohort after this one? So this is the Class of 2026, and we'll be caught up with the Class 2027. And then November 11th is the Veterans Day Holiday. For those of you who know, that is one of the few school calendar thou shouts that you have to take that day on the holiday, so that is on the Tuesdays. So when people go, why did those crazy people let them off on Tuesday? Why didn't they just take the Monday like other people? That is not allowed by state law, so we will celebrate. So you'll have school on the 10th, school will be out on the 11th, and then we'll return to school on the 12th. Certainly, we appreciate all of our veterans and all the veterans who have served in peacetime and wartime, young and old alike. So that is my report for this month.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett, for all you did. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Sir, move.
Second. All those in favor, aye? Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Garrett.